It is seven o'clock, so I'm going to call the committee of the whole meeting to orders Tuesday, June 26th. First item on the agenda is roll call.
Risotto?
Here.
Etac?
Here.
Stark?
Here.
Chanzet?
Wolf?
Here.
Salvati?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
O'Brien?
Here.
Callahan?
Here.
Meitzler?
Here.
Malley?
Here.
Uer?
Here.
Serone? And McFadden?
Here.
Okay, we have one. Next item then is going to be items removed, added, or changed. We don't have anything to remove that I, but I do want to change. I want to put item number 10 up right behind item number three, so we'll make that 3A. Okay? Moving on then, we'll go to item number three, which is matters from the public for items that are not on the agenda. So Dale, I know you'd like to address this, so now would be the time. Some slides. And as Dale's setting that up, if there's anybody else that wants to address us for an item that is not on the agenda, whether it be this item or any other item, you can just come on up as we have a little break in the action. Okay, yeah. And could you please give us your name and address?
Sure. Good evening. My name is Dale Rudy, and this is my wife, Melinda. We live at 921 Carlisle Road in Batavia, and we've been there since 1987. We're Batavia residents since 1985, which we know means that in Batavia terms, we're relatively new here. Thank you for giving us an opportunity to address the committee of the whole tonight and about a sidewalk installation project that is about to be underway on or near our property, so that you can visualize the project and your and our concerns. I have a few photos to show you. We live next to a vacant city-owned lot, shown here in blue, which is located on Smith Court. On a daily basis, children and families traverse this lot to get to and from Alice Gustafson School, located on the upper right-hand side of that intersection. Melinda and I own the parcel located north of the vacant lot, which is outlined in orange. This is, of course, the path that the children and families take when they go to school. However, using authority provided in a nearly 40-year-old easement, the new sidewalk that is proposed to be installed will take this route. This, of course, is not the path that pedestrians will take when they walk to and from school. Why would they? It is a near certainty that they will continue to follow the diagonal line even after the new sidewalk is completed. This seems wasteful, but that is not the only cost of the project. To build this sidewalk, three healthy and growing trees will need to be destroyed. Before I get to that, though, here is the view of the lot from Smith Court, and you can see the school in the background. And then here's the view of the lot from the intersection of Carlisle and Hoover. So here's tree number one. This is taken from Smith Court. This is where the sidewalk begins. As you can see by the markings, the tree is dead center in the sidewalk. Here's what that tree looks like. Tree number two is on that north-south area, and that tree looks like this with the blue arrow that you can't see real well. And then tree number three is on the west end of the east-west section of the sidewalk. And as you can see, the sidewalk takes a 90-degree turn, and here's what that tree looks like. Now let me give you a quick tour of sorts of the sidewalk, a virtual tour, using actual survey markings that were done last week. So here's where it starts on Smith Court, going right through tree number one, continues north through tree number two, does a 90-degree turn to the east, goes through tree number three, heads down the vacant lot until it gets to the point where it takes a slight jog to the right, goes through these bushes, down a hill, and intersects with the existing sidewalk that goes down the pathway. Ladies and gentlemen, we've been in conversation with Scott Buning, who was instrumental in delaying the actual start of the project, which was supposed to happen last Friday. And we understand that Scott is involved in internal discussions within the city administration. We're very grateful for his involvement. We're not familiar with the city council's procedures for something like this. We're not at all challenging the legality of installing this sidewalk. We are, however, hopeful that we can all agree that we can do better than this. Spending tens of thousands of dollars to build a sidewalk that no one will use is silly, wasteful, and actually feels a little shameful, given that we have to lose three good, healthy trees. So we have an opportunity here, an opportunity to do better than this. If it's important to provide a paved path, let's figure out a way to do so on the diagonal across a city-owned lot so that it will be used. Maybe pave the walkway with blacktops so it can be done in a less expensive way. Or do nothing at all and leave it just as it has been for the last three decades, and we can all be fiscal heroes. Thank you for giving me time tonight.
Thank you. Alderman Kelly, and I think you've been pretty involved in this. You have any comments?
Absolutely. No, I've been talking with Dale, Melinda about this one. And this sidewalk appearing has been kind of a magical unicorn since even before I moved here, and that it was always going to happen, but it never seemed like it was going to happen. And I think it surprised me and the Rudy's when, last week, on Wednesday, Mrs. Rudy went out and was told, "This is where we're building it," and it was on their property and in a manner in which, having walked that way with my kids all the time and the natural route, it's everything that he's saying. It will be a waste of money. It will never be used that way. That'll be our own little bridge to nowhere, where it just doesn't flow what everyone is going to do. And then going over that berm down onto that sidewalk, I don't know what kind of problems that's going to cause, because you're going to have kids riding bikes this way, and you're going to have a blind spot. It's just a recipe for a disaster. So the only thing that genuinely makes sense is to put it, as the crow flies, straight line. That's all the kids are going to do, is go from point A to point B and straight through the, through the lot. That's the only thing that makes any kind of fiscal sense whatsoever. It is a, that lot, I know it was discussed as being a developable lot a few years ago, and there is no way I would ever support that, nor would the residents in that area, because that cut-through right there is a major flow for traffic, of pedestrian traffic. You take that away, there are going to be parents that are going to be driving more to get around through there. So it would just cause a lot of problems by taking that away. It is a neighborhood amenity just by being a vacant lot. And it is, like Dale said, it's been used that way for years and years and years. Even though that safe route to school was put in, it still isn't as utilized as going around the corner and up it. Kids are still just going to go straight through the lot. So if we're going to put it through, I would request that we put it on the straight, and if that can't be done, then we don't need a path.
Alderman Wolf?
Yeah, I would agree with Marty. I think if we can't route it across, bisect the lot, the only other option I would consider would be go straight on the south side of the lot and run it down that border where it affects no trees and probably is, to me, in grade, a lot easier route to make. The other thing I'd like to see is if the east end of it would line up with the sidewalk that's there that cuts through the path as it is now at the end of Carlisle. Line those two up so it becomes a T-intersection, you know, we don't have another T-intersection, but make it a crosswalk there. I don't know where this design came from. Was this designed by us, or was this designed by the school district? Because I think this is part of the construction project at Gustafson. Correct me if I'm wrong, but that's where this stems from, is the money for this is coming from the school district to put the sidewalk in as part of the agreement on what they did on their building.
Yeah, just a little history on it. The sidewalk was required as part of the conditional use as Gustafson did some expansion back, I think in 2008. The sidewalk was actually supposed to be constructed by 2010. That didn't happen, obviously. And so we've been in discussions with the school district ever since. But back in 1980, I believe it was, is when the easements were actually granted for the sidewalk. So the lot that Mr. Rudy indicates, the one that has the number on it, that was city property at one point, and then that was part of the land swap we did with them about four years ago, I believe. And, and that entire lot actually has an ingress, egress easement that runs to the school district. So it's not actually the city's easement, it's, it's an easement that runs to the school district, and then it runs along the south, the west side of, of the city property that we've retained. So that is the legal route that they can go based on the easements. So if we are looking to do something different, a couple things would have to happen. Where we showed the jog on the east end there, that's actually kind of running it around the Rudy's property that there isn't an easement on, so the Rudy's would have to grant an easement, but to have it still go across part of their property. And then the city would also have to grant either a license agreement or an easement or something like that to the school district to run the sidewalk across there, because that sidewalk ownership, construction, and maintenance is on the school district, not the city. So the school district would be maintaining that sidewalk regardless.
So if we wanted to put an easement along the south side of that property, we'd have to do that first?
We would have to grant that easement or a license agreement or however.
Now, east of the blue line, do we own that property?
We own that up to the path in that particular area also, yes.
Because I think that's, I like to try to make this as simple as possible, and if we can keep it all on city property, so we don't have to have an easement from somebody else, just leave it on city property, even if that moves the alignment of it over, but leave it all on city property, and then we just have the easement on there, and that's it.
Right.
I agree with you, Alan. Simple's the easy way to go, but I'm not sure it's the best way to go in a case like this, because if you put it on the east, on the south property line, the kids are still not going to use it. They're going to go path of least resistance unless you put a fence up there. So I think the easiest, simplest, most sensible thing to do is, as Marty says, or as Mr., as Dale says, just run it straight as the crow flies. Would you be willing to grant an easement to the city at that portion that Scott just mentioned if we did run it straight as the crow flies?
On the part that the city owns, that's not our property.
The east, the east end of the old railroad, when we did the swap, so east of the jog...
We would, we would consider that, sure.
Okay, if that's the case, I mean, unless somebody has an objection, I would like to just direct staff to, to work with the school district, put a stop to this. It's going to save them money, because there's more lineal footage of sidewalk, cutting down trees and everything else, going this route than if you just go straight as the crow flies. Just direct staff to work with the school district and the property owner, the Rudy's, to make that happen and make that happen.
Anybody have a problem?
Is it, is it, is the lot developable? Can it be developed or buildable?
That's, that's the issue, is that, you know, it is, it is a lot that potentially could be developable or sell, you know, either used for municipal purposes or, you know, sold for development. So there is the development potential there. If we put the sidewalk through the middle of it, that kind of, you know, foregoes that. And then the city would still be responsible for the ownership and maintenance of the remainder of the property.
There's always been conversation about that, and at one time, that lot was set aside for the possibility of a future substation in that area. Well, since then, the substation that was directly north of it has been taken out. We don't have a need for a substation in that area. So I think Laura could back us up on that, but I don't think that staff feels as though there's any need to retain that piece of property for a substation. Should you decide that you would want to sell it off as a developable lot, I think, as Marty said, you're going to run into a lot of opposition. You can also see, just by looking at it, the way the two driveways come out onto the cul-de-sac, you'd have three driveways right in that area there. So, I mean, how's that going to work? You know, and then the other way, you could, you could take a driveway out onto Carlisle Road, but that's right on that, I guess I'll call it an intersection, there's a stop sign there, that wouldn't be favorable either, and I can't think that staff would probably support that either. So is it developable? Sure it is. Will it get developed? No.
So what do you think, Scott?
Well, I think, I think the question ends up being is, you know, what do we want to do with the remainder of the land? You know, I mean, if we're going to do this and allow it to run diagonally through there, I think we need to talk about disposition of the land and whether or not we'd be, you know, wanting to sell it, because, you know, obviously, we're going to be stuck with maintaining both sides of this lot after the sidewalk runs to the middle of it, so.
So, and I get that, and if we're not going to develop it, leave it alone, okay? If we're looking to do something with it, leave it alone for now, don't do anything, and let the kids just take the path of least resistance until we decide we're going to do something with it. I wouldn't want to be, is, is it safe for children to walk now as it is? Is there a path? Is it all muddied and stuff?
No.
So it's clean for the kids to walk there, safe? There's no ankle turns or anything like that? No, I mean, if, and if we're not going to do anything with the lot, I don't, I'm thinking maybe make a park out of it, give it to the park district. So the park, make a park, and the kids can walk through a nice park, I don't know.
This is what the lot is.
Doesn't have to be developed, for me.
That's a good, I, I like that idea.
You know, we don't have to develop it, but it just, we should look into it.
One option, if I may, if I may, the, you know, what we, what I would suggest that we do is enter into a license agreement with the school district, so that we could then terminate that license agreement if we decide we're going to sell, if we don't make a decision soon about what we wanted to do with it. That way, we can terminate that. We'd obviously have to deal with moving the sidewalk at that point in time, but at least that gives us some flexibility on the lot still in the future.
Elliot?
I think it, I think you kind of said it best there with the driveway configuration as it is, the bike path behind it, that L-shaped drive to the corner of it, it's the accessibility issue, and you're not going to get something of a home there. So if we don't have the need for a substation, keep it as open park space. We've been saying that that's what we're trying to have more and more of anyways. It's close to the school, leave it as open park space. Put a, put an efficient sidewalk, accessibility there, and move on.
Tony?
One thing that could be a problem for the school district is, is that a safe route to school that which they would need to pave to reduce transportation costs, you know, if, you know, there's state regulations on whether kids can walk to school or not, and if there's not a path, not going through private property, that can be a problem. I'm just saying that if it's left, because I'm thinking, why is a school district going to invest that money? They wouldn't just put a sidewalk on there and make it more convenient. That's, there's surely reason for it, but I don't know exactly what that is.
Well, Scott, maybe you could jump in on that, but I mean, this has been something the city council's been trying to get done for a very, very long time, because everybody uses that lot for that reason. And that was one of the conditions that was put onto the school district when they did their improvements to the property.
Right.
That it be done, and it's just never gotten done.
Yeah, that was a condition of the conditional use back in 2008, so that they were actually required to put the sidewalk down to Bernadette, as well as the one to Smith Court. That was a condition of that.
It was a condition put on by the city.
Correct.
And not the state.
Correct, in terms of, but the easement was granted to the school district sometime before, in the 1980s, actually, so.
Scott?
Well, just to, to talk about the development of that lot, having been a kid and following the path of least resistance, if a house goes in there, I'm still going through that way. So now you're going to have a whole other set of problems with, you know, with that land or...
Nobody's talking about it being a home.
What I'm saying, if, if we're thinking we're going to hold on to it for development, it's just going to, it's going to cause a whole lot more problems.
That's left for the engineers.
Yeah, I, let me just give a little history here. I was part of a discussion right after I got elected, sometime in the early 1980s, and this subdivision was just then being, or the Mill Creek subdivision was just then starting to be talked about being built. And we had a meeting with Tony Donnet, who was the attorney for all the would-be developers who were involved in it, and there were several people that were involved in the subdivision. And we had a couple of different issues. One was that Mill Creek subdivision, as it then existed, did not have a way out to the north. And there had to be a road built, basically Millview Drive extended from about Carlisle or Danforth up to Main Street. And they, the developers agreed to, they had, they already owned the land, but they didn't have that as part of the deal. They ended up bringing that into the deal and building that street through there. And Tony Donnet, who was, I always had a lot of admiration for him, because he was kind of a far thinker, and he always tried to find the best possible answer to a lot of questions. This lot was discussed, and, you know, he said, "Well, the way it configures there," again, as you've already talked about, the three driveways would unite there, and it would look, you know, some people would miss the wrong driveway and go into somebody else's driveway. He says, "I think this would be a great access way directly to the school for all the kids." And so he says, I, I think that he put it in some way in the annexation agreement, I think that this was some kind of an easement or dedicated to us or something.
Substation, yes.
Yeah, substation. We want to put the substation, but then there would be room for this sidewalk. So I think from the very beginning, the original developers had the idea that this would be the access for a lot of the kids to get into that subdivision and get to school, both coming and going. I just also, as a kind of an anecdotal thing, I was sharing with Dale before the meeting started, we had a fire last week down in Mill Creek subdivision off of Challenge at Halliday in a garage, and Fire Department did a wondrous job and got it out right away. So in my other official capacity as Fire Department photographer, I responded down there to see if I could take some pictures. And so I'm greeted by a group of second ward residents, I believe they were, young mothers and whatever have you. So they had the mayor standing on the street there, so we began a momentary lobbying discussion about why they thought this was a great idea to build this sidewalk from Smith Court over to Gustafson School, and that was going to save a lot of consternation and enhance safety and everything else. So the alderman down there, you have, I think, quite a constituency of people who think that this is the way to go by putting this sidewalk through here.
Dave, if I could just kind of, kind of wrap it up a little bit, would be, I look at it just the same way a couple weeks ago, that Hammerhead. This is really only used by Ward Two and Ward Seven kids and their parents. No one is ever going to use it as a part, and if they do, it would be the same ones that are going to be there. The simplest, most efficient way that has resounding support from all the neighbors, I hear it all the time, would put a sidewalk through there in the straight and narrow and keep it as simple as possible and not overthink it. Couldn't agree more.
Scott?
Just one more thing. I mean, when we go with the di, even if we go with the diagonal route, there probably is going to be still one loss of one tree by the driveway at the house to the west of that, just because we only have a 10-foot wide strip of land there. And, you know, we'll have to, we'll have to see when they go out there and stake it out, but that, that tree may have to be lost anyway, so just, just so you know.
Anything else, Dale?
No, thank you for your time.
Anybody else from the public want to speak about this? Thanks, Dale.
My name is Roger Pirret, and I live at 917 Smith Court. I have taken care, and Dale has taken care of that lot for 30 years. You should come down there on a nice day, when all the kids are running through there, parents are sitting up there with their dogs, they're talking. Great, great view. And we have never, ever had one municipal or the school board lawnmower on that path. We have mowed it ourselves, we've kept it nice, and I can't see why we can't just leave alone as is, because the grass is never, I've mowed it every third day. And I've even lost a lawnmower on one of yours spikes up there, but in 1987, when I hit a spike with my lawnmower and it bent the crank shaft, so I had to go get a new lawnmower. And my gosh, if you put the sidewalk down there, you're going to go through my garden, which is on your property, I'm sorry. It's, it's so great to see, I'm old-fashioned, and it's so great to see all the kids come down there and run towards their parents over at Smith Court. At 3:30 in the afternoon, that court is full of cars, and the kids are coming down there, the parents are coming down there, and it's great. I wish you would just leave it. It's not hurting anybody. We take care of it. And, you know, that's all I can say, is that it's great. It's old-fashioned, and I love it. Let the kids run. Thank you.
The only question I have for you, though, and I, I appreciate what you're saying, and my kids, I live up on Millview Drive also myself, so all my kids, all five of them walk through that lot. They're all grown and gone now, but they've all been up and down that lot like all the kids you're talking about. But what I'm wondering is, now we have an opportunity to put the sidewalk in there, where maybe someday in the future, the next homeowners that are adjoining it, whether it be you or in the one to the south, or whether it be in the Rudy's property, I mean, we're all not going to be here forever. Maybe the next homeowners aren't going to be willing to take care of it, and they aren't going to be so happy about seeing the kids do it, and they're going to be in here saying, "Why aren't you putting a sidewalk in there? We want a sidewalk in there, and who's going to maintain this?" And, "Well, I'm not going to mow the grass." And so now we've got an opportunity to do it, so should we take advantage of that opportunity looking at the future?
Yeah, but you're, you're creating so much havoc with all the beauty of all the trees. Where are all my squirrels going to go? I mean, they're living in those trees, I'm telling you. I can't, I can't see, I can't see where you're gaining anything. And if nobody else is going to mow it after I'm dead or Dale's moved out, then I guess the school is going to have to own up and take care of the property. You guys own it, but we've been taking care of it. I asked for right of first refusal many years ago, and I said, "No, you can't have it." And, you know, I can't afford to buy the property and pay the taxes on it, but by God, I will take care of it, and I will make sure that the kids can go through there every day. I mean, I came out the other morning, yesterday morning, and you should have seen the bicycle tracks going in the dew, early in the morning, that just got right across there. Go ahead, put your sidewalk in, nobody's going to use it. Now, if you put it down the south side, well, I guess I'm just, I'm the one that's going to lose then, because I, there goes my garden. And there goes a, you know, a new way that I'm going to have to find to mow it, because I have never seen a school lawnmower on that property since I've lived there since 1982. And same way on the property, the path between Carlisle and Bernadette. I mowed that for 30 years when it was a nice pastoral path that used to be the railroad, and I took care of it, and now I'm still taking care of it, even though you got the sidewalk down there. I haven't seen a school lawnmower down there once. And when they do come down there, they cut it four inches high, I cut it two inches high, so the people that walk all their dogs down there, I mean, the school kids, let's take, there's more people that use that path than it is for school kids. If you knew how many dogs that walk down there every day, and how much poop I pick up every day when I walk my dog down there, I'm, you know, I'm here, I'll stay here, I'll take care of it, but I sure don't like to see what you guys are trying to do. When that lot was, what, I guess this was, what, 20 years ago when they wanted to do this, when that, they thought that lot was buildable? You're looking at a lot that is not buildable, and still you want to use an easement that does no good, because if the lot's not buildable, then why do you want to go around? Why don't you just go right straight through? You folks own it, I just sit there and take care of it. So thank you for letting me talk.
Susan?
Dave, this is, you know, that weird logic that sometimes I come up with, is if they've been taking care of it for all this time, we have no intent to sell it, you know, to build a substation on it, why can't we deed the land to the people who've been taking care of it and have an easement that goes down the center that we pave and put park benches so the parents can sit on it while they're waiting for their kids, et cetera, and make it an established cut-through? I mean, they've been taking care of it for 30-plus years. I almost feel like they own it anyway. I mean, yes, it will increase their property taxes, but not to the extent if they had had to buy the land. So, I mean, to me, it just makes sense. It gives them control over what will eventually happen on that property anyway. It's not going to be buildable, we're not going to put a substation there, the neighborhood doesn't want to park there. I mean, it just makes sense that the people who abut the land own the land, especially if they've been taking care of it. I don't see any reason we haven't done this before.
Scott?
Aside, outside of that, my question is, what happens in the winter during, you know, if we have, you know, heavier, heavier snow?
Well, normally what happens during winter is, the kids just run right across there to school. And if they don't, then the parents drive all the way around to Carlisle and let their And if they don't, then the parents drive all the way around to Carlisle and let their kids go. Either that, or they're down there on Bernadette, and they come down the path that is there now.
Sure.
And, no, I don't have a snow blower that would go across there.
And that's my question, is, will the schools do that?
Your question is, what's wrong with letting the kids run through snow? Do they have to have a path? I mean, you were a kid.
Trust me, I really have more pair of shoes.
Yeah, right. Why do we have to have something that is taken care of? Let a kid be a kid and run to school, for God's sakes. You know?
Dave, looking at this and thinking about the one tree that's left there and the fact that there's nothing else to what I would say is the southeast of the little leg that we own there, how don't we work out a land swap so that we can get the sidewalk centered between those two driveways so we don't have to take that tree out? I mean, it's square yards of property, but I think if we could work that out, it would make way more sense to try to get that centered over there and not have to take a tree out that's been there for 30-plus years.
Yeah, it's an 85-foot tree, it's beautiful.
And preserve as much of it as we can, work out a simple land swap, same square footage for each property, and just move that sidewalk over. So it's like about on where the line is that we own and then cuts across that corner.
Yeah, it might be easiest to actually do it as an easement, perhaps, instead of a land swap.
Whatever is the simplest thing, but try to do that so we leave the trees alone. If we have to make it, have a curve in the center of it instead of a straight line across a property, to leave the tree, isn't there a tree out in the middle of it in the other view here? I just, you know, leave it as much alone as we can and run the sidewalk through there. And I do think that the sidewalk makes a difference. I fought a lot to get sidewalks on what I used to call the hillies when I was a kid that, at Augustusson, when all the dirt was back there, and we used to ride BMX bikes back there before there were BMX.
Still is there. Hillies is still there.
And have that kind of fun there, and you're right, that's, kids should get used to walking to school and not have to be driven every day. I really think that this should be a park. You know, we should never think about it ever again after tonight, that this is a buildable lot.
But just to mow it and everything, that's why I'm like, if the people who live adjacent to it are willing to mow it in perpetuity, and then it goes with their house when they sell their house, and somebody continues to mow that land for forever, it takes our maintenance out of it, other than having to worry about snow blowing that path. And that will be on the school, because that's the safe routes to school part of it. So for me, it's like, it puts it back on the tax rolls, we no longer have to ever talk about this piece of land again. The people who've been maintaining it for all these years now have bigger lots.
I don't know if we can give that away, can we?
Not typically. Usually we have to get an appraisal and sell it for, you know, a certain amount of the praise value and everything else. So, I mean, it does have a deed restriction because of the substation requirement on there, so it would depress the value of the land. But typically, we have to get an appraisal of the land to figure out how much it's worth and then, you know, sell it based on that. Typically, you know, remnant pieces of land have been going about a dollar per square foot. That's based on a lot of appraisals we've had. So even if you use that as, you know, a general rule of thumb, you know, this is a 10,000-square-foot lot or so, I would guess, so, you know, $5,000 would probably be the praise value.
And I guess my next question would be, would, what would it take, or would the Park District entertain taking that property as a neighborhood park?
Yeah, I would, you know, without having talked to them, I don't know that they would. We talked to them about some of the other pieces north of Danforth, and they said, you know, we offered it to them, and they said they really weren't interested in that at that time. So, you know, I can't say for sure that they wouldn't, but last time we talked to them about a property, they looked.
Do we, as the city, do we mow any of the other pathways on the railroad trail of the property that we own along there? Do we mow that? Is that part of our contract?
I don't believe so.
I was going to say, I think it's all adjacent property owners. I mean, I even know one person that, in the winter, plows it with his four-wheeler on his way to work, drives down the path to get that cleared out to the north.
Right. Safe routes to school paths, both north and south, those are owned by the school district. I don't know that they actually are plowing them or anything like that during the winter, so.
I don't think they do. Scott, I know you said typically. Is there any circumstances where that's done? Because I'm thinking about all the savings that I know I have never seen, ever, the city doing anything with that lot. I know it's always been Roger and Dale taking care of it all the time. And we've discussed this for years, that they've been the ones who, if they wanted to present us a bill.
It's a wash.
Right.
I can look into it a little bit more with the city attorney and just to see what, you know, what other options there may be. I mean, obviously, this is a TIF district, we could sell it for zero, but this isn't a.
And I guess we need to ask, would you want to own that land and have ultimate control up to the path?
I'd like to own it. I think Dale would like to own it. But, you know, I'm retired, my taxes are way around 10 grand right now, and that's going to add on more to me, and, you know, if I was still in an earning mood and mode, yeah, I'd take it in a heartbeat. I'd take it in a heartbeat now.
The good thing is, is when you sold your property, it increases the property value because your lot's large.
Oh, I know it does.
So that's the upside. And you have control over what happens on that lot forever.
I understand that.
Yeah.
In regard to be legal.
I'll even mow it.
Melinda?
I just wanted to mention about the, somebody had asked, and I couldn't see where I was sitting, about the snow. And when we have had the last few years and we've gotten this much snow, I have taken myself a snow shovel out there, because I can't take a snowplow through the grass. So I have taken a snow shovel myself and have shoveled from my driveway up there all the way down. And I have not taken the diagonal. I've gone, you know, more kind of this way and then up north. And I can tell you that they use the first part of it, but they don't continue on, they'll just plow their own way, all the way straight forward. So you just see the little footprints going that way. But we have, in the case of a whole lot of snow, we, I have myself shoveled a path for them to be there. So it is safe, even in the wintertime, to walk on there. Thank you.
Marty, I'd say the consensus is that the current plan is not the right plan. So now it's either leave it as is, or give staff direction to work it out, as Alan had said, you know, maybe get rid of the property and put an easement through there for a sidewalk and do something, but don't do what they're planning on doing now.
Yeah, I think definitely don't do what they're planning on doing now. If it became too cumbersome, the easiest thing to do would be not to do anything. But I know, I know Roger does not, is not in favor of the sidewalk, but I know of the majority of the neighborhood always has been. And this was, it's been that way even before I moved there. It's been the constant talk of, when's it coming? Are you going to get it? Are you going to get it? Are you going to get it? And it's always been kind of the talk, until all of a sudden, now it pops up, and nobody was ready for that.
So what do you want to do?
I would like to direct staff to figure out what we can do about putting it on the street. And if it can't be done, if it's too cumbersome, then get it.
So.
It can be done.
Is close to bisecting the lot as possible and save the trees that are there?
Yeah.
I mean, and that's, we've done that all over town where we were out, sidewalks around trees, you know, to put them through where we can, and get easements to get them across property to make more sense than trying to skirt what property we own there, but then have it come out on somebody else's property. I don't like that.
So the direction, to be clear then, the direction would be to have staff work with the school district to stop the current plan as is, and work with the property owners and the school district to make that path go through on a straight diagonal the best as possible to avoid any tree damage, and install the sidewalk? Is that what I'm hearing?
I'd like to see it there, because it's not just about us that are here today or that have owned the lots for 30 years. It's 30 years into the future, when the school's still there, and the next generation or two of kids come through there, they need to have a path to get through there. That was the intent from the beginning. Okay, Scott?
Well, and if you do put the path in there, that, the school does need to plow that, correct? Because it's a safe route?
That's, I don't know that they've actually been plowing it.
I don't know if the, I don't know if the requirement is actually off-site for the school district being required to plow it. I think the path has to be there, and then it usually falls on the property owners along that pathway. Because I know we had that discussion with the sidewalk going north between Blaine and Morton and Walnut, you know, who was going to, who was going to plow that?
I don't know that the school district is actually plowing either one of those paths right now.
So Scott, the current plan, how wide is the sidewalk? Five feet?
Five foot.
So that's what would be proposed to go straight through, then also is five feet?
Right.
Okay, is that what we're doing?
That's what I'd like to see happen. And I would love to.
Does that work?
And I would like to also direct staff to look for options of the potential sale of the property.
Yeah. Yeah, that's why I say work with the neighbors and school district and make this happen.
Yep.
Okay, so that's what we're going to do. Thanks for coming down. And hopefully we'll see that happen. It's been going to happen for 30 years. Anybody else have anything for matters that are not on the agenda?
Ten years after.
Okay. We're going to move on then to the change in the agenda, which is item 3A, which is now the Resolution 18-82-R, change order number five for Williams Brothers Construction Incorporated, Alderman O'Brien.
This is just a contract modification request. It's a change order number five. There's 12 change orders or requests per that. Jerry, when he was here the last time, said this would be coming at us. It's been a while since we've had one, I believe. So if anybody have any questions or concerns, have read through the change orders?
I'm just surprised it's as small as it is.
I have a couple of questions for you, if I may, Jerry.
Go right ahead.
On one of them, it's a sand oil operator separator made of concrete. It's not acceptable to the plumbing code, Illinois Plumbing Code.
That's correct.
Shouldn't that have been caught before we got this far along?
Uh, yes. We had the sand oil separator designed from day one from the main building. There's going to be a maintenance garage and things like that where we were trapping grease. And we've, it's, it's something that I've seen put in before on several occasions in this state in concrete, allegedly it was done incorrectly.
So it's a state code now, that it has to be stainless?
I believe it is the only state code. Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong on that.
That's correct.
That's correct, all right.
All right. Well, and it was only, you know, 4,300, but 43 is 43. Then there's one, per code, manufacturer shop drawings need to be light within the elevator pit. I mean, that's always, that's, anytime there's an elevator, you have to have an outlet and light.
And the outlet and the light was not shown on our electrical drawings.
Okay. And these things happen, I understand, but I just, I'm raising the issue just to see how we got there.
Yep.
There's one here that has, ductwork was found to be in conflict with an overhead door. There was no change order cost to it and zero days added to it. Why would we even see this?
Well, uh.
I appreciate you being, you know, transparent, but I mean, this is something you guys could just deal with.
It is. What we'll often do is we'll conduct, we'll create field orders, which will be essentially thought of as being no or very small cost, not worth pushing the paper to create. We weren't sure in this case, because we weren't sure the route that we would take to get around it. It's a very large door, it's a very tight space, where we had to shoot the gap with this duct. So initially, we created the CMR after talking with the mechanical subcontractor. He felt it necessary, he didn't want to be held to a field order and eat it.
Okay. Basically, it sounds like just for documentation.
Yeah.
Change order request pretty staff. Better see the alarm strobe for the north end of the site, relocate the alarm strobe. That's, I guess, another thing just amiss architecturally or electrically.
No, that was a request after we had gotten past the award stage and we had been talking with the operators. It was a request to change the position of it now. I believe we had talked about it in design, and we had just, we had not shifted the light. It's not for a reason for any code or an architectural feature or anything like that. It was a preference in case the operators are at the north end of the site, and they want to see down at the south end of the site, and we just did not make it in before the deadline, so to speak.
Okay. So, I mean, it's just basically, it's a safety issue. I mean, if it's a fire alarm strobe, it would.
The strobe is actually for the bypass pumping system.
Okay.
And that would only take over in the event of a power loss, and a generator would kick on. The bypass, the backup flow system would take over control of the pumping station. So that would alert somebody, not necessarily the south end of the site where the, where we showed it basically facing south, where it would just die. You know, nobody would.
No one would know.
Chances of an operator being there and seeing it are pretty slim. So it's a good idea, it was worth the change.
Absolutely. All right. Lastly is obviously the odor control.
Yes.
How is that going? I mean, you guys completed the work.
We completed installation, seems to be going very well. The operators have.
Scott?
Scott?
It's all test, working.
All right. Well, that's all I have. I just wanted to bring these up to you. I appreciate you sticking around here, stopping by to just answer some questions. That was very big of you.
Yeah.
Appreciate that. Anybody have anything else? Marty?
Just a quick aside to this tonight. They've been doing a large amount of work in the city, but they're also giving back huge, and they're one of, if not the largest sponsor for this year's fireworks. So we thank you for giving back to the community.
Absolutely. Happy to do it.
Well, I'll just say this, and like Marty's saying too, is, you know, you guys are doing a large share of work in the city, and I've not noticed any of it. You know, in downtown, it seems like you are doing a nice job containing your work.
Yeah.
And lastly, also the schedule, I noticed it's still only seven days out with all the rains and everything else. You haven't really lost a lot of time, it seems like.
Well, luckily, for the most part, the contractors have been working through it. Maybe not necessarily all of the subcontractors, but definitely the general has been on site. We're almost to the point where we're covered with a roof, so they have work that they can do in the first floor of the main building specifically that they've been continuing on with.
Well, I appreciate your efforts, thank you.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Anyone care to make a motion?
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Metzler, second by Yura for Resolution 18-82 authorizing change order number five with Williams Brothers Construction for Phase One Wastewater Treatment Plant Rehabilitation Project. All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? That's it. Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you very much.
So that'll vote as city council. All right, next item's item four, ordinance 18-46, grant of variance for a monument sign at 76 South Randall Road. Burrito Pirela Mexicana is the applicant, and Alderman Stark, you've got that?
Yep, I do. So zoning board of appeals has seen this. They had a public hearing on June 6th to review the request. They are asking for an 80-square-foot message area for a sign where 60 feet is permitted normally. Zoning board found there were unique circumstances for the property, and they voted to approve it. The applicant presented to the zoning board a revised 10-foot-tall sign with a message area that complies with zoning code. Zoning board agreed the sign would be appropriate. And so, of course, you know, the pros are, the approval allows for a new monument sign, the cons are that, you know, if we didn't put in, we didn't approve this, they would not be able to put in that type of sign, and it could have a negative impact on the viability of the business. And it is, if you know where this is, where the old White Castle is, it's kind of tucked back by Taco Bell along that strip. So I can understand why the sign would be important. And there's no budget impact, there's no staff impact. And I can say, we went there last night on purpose so that I knew what to look for, and you absolutely cannot tell this is the White Castle. I mean, it is shocking, the transformation inside, because we used to go to White Castle every week. So it's just amazing to me what they've done in the interior of this building, and the food is excellent, and for those listening, I highly recommend that you go check it out. But, all that said, would, is the petitioner here, would anybody like to say anything about the sign, or?
The sign contractor is here for the applicants, and they can answer any questions.
Does anybody have any questions about the sign or the placement, the reasoning? Okay. Would someone like to make the motion to approve ordinance 1846, grant of approval for a variance for a monument sign at 76 South Randall Road, Burrito Pirea Mexicana?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by O'Brien, second by Silvati, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I just wanted, uh, aye, I just wanted to say, though, it was also approved by the zoning board of appeals. Six to zero.
Yes.
Okay, so that'll vote as City Council. Thank you, Drew. Okay, next item is item five, ordinance eighteen dash forty-seven, annexing part of eight, thirteen eighty-one Chatatuga Street, Alman Stark.
Okay, this is, uh, a property that was subdivided, included a portion of old railroad right away along Chatatuga Street. Uh, then when the property was subdivided, the railroad parcel was included in the lot boundary, but the railroad parcel was actually outside the city limits. The property owner requested a fence permit for the property, and when we requested they annex the property to consolidate and simplify the permitting process, they agreed and submitted a petition. So, all that said, again, our alternatives are we can annex it, or we cannot annex it. The pros will allow the property owners to receive building permits from the city for all of their property and keep the city electric utility for both parcels. And we're also going to receive a small increase in property taxes as well. There are no cons. The plat of annexation and recording cost will be about two-hundred-and-fifty dollars, and the city will be paying for that. And staffing impact, there's none. And if we pass this, uh, tonight, it will go on the next City Council agenda. Anyone have any questions? Ellen?
Chatatua.
Thank you. Where is this?
It's at the south end.
The north end of the Moose Field, the baseball field is behind the Moose.
Okay.
So if you go down to the Lincoln Inn, the first street, turn on this, uh, Sycamore to the right.
Uh huh.
The dead end of it, the little tiny six lots or whatever is on Chatatua.
Chatatua, okay, thank you.
Runs under the baseball field.
Yep.
Right, baseball field's right in this area here.
Okay. Okay, so, it's, so, did anyone have any questions other than a pronunciation discussion? Chatatua?
Raised by an English maker.
That's fine. Your, your guess was as good as mine on that one. So I make a motion, or I, would someone like to make a motion to recommend to Council ordinance eighteen forty-seven annexing part of thirteen eighty-one Chatatua Street?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Callahan, second by Wolf, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Okay. Item six, resolution eighteen dash seventy-five dash R, approving a plat of subdivision for the city hall property near the Pegbon Center subdivision, one hundred and one fifty North Island Avenue, Alman Stark.
And this goes back to what we've been working on the last few weeks. The city and the Park District staff have been working to address longstanding discrepancies between the location of our facilities and the property lines that are underneath them. And there have been instances where facilities such as the Pegbon Center crosses property lines. And the city of Batavia and the Park District have handled these issues on an informal basis. The respective staffs believe it's appropriate to transfer properties now to minimize the issues. So council action approving this ordinance, or actually, the council action approving ordinance eighteen thirty facilitated this proposed plat, which will be the instrument to formally transfer properties between the two entities. And so, um, the plan commission briefly discussed the proposed plat. The commission inquired if there'd be an easement reserved for river rain access. Staff noted that this already exists and the plat would not be changing access right to the adjoining properties. The commission agreed the plat addressed appropriately the proposed land transfer. So the pros, the action is the last step to complete the contemplated land transfers with the Park District. And both agencies would now control the land under their improvements. There are no, um, negative actions that the staff has identified. There's no budget impact, there's no staff impact. And if we push this to City Council, it will be voted on for final action on July second. Plan Commission, by a vote of six to zero, approved this and recommended the plat of subdivision. And staff also recommends it. So does anyone have any questions about this? It's just more housekeeping.
I'm glad we're getting all this done, so that we, you know, when none of us are around here that ever knew anything about it, it's already done.
As much as we'd like to, I think we're living forever, but, yeah. Okay, so would someone like to make a motion to approve or send to City Council resolution eighteen seventy-five R, a resolution approving a plat of subdivision for City Hall Pegbon Center subdivision?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Meitzler, second by Malay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Consent.
Consent. Item number seven, ordinance eighteen dash forty-nine, annexing Pine Street and South Van Buren Avenue, Alman Stark.
Okay, this was last discussed with the committee on January twenty-third. And this, uh, committee gave staff direction to proceed with soliciting voluntary petitions to annex and if not received, to proceed with involuntary annexation. Staff sent a letter for voluntary petitions to annex on February nineteenth. They did not receive any petitions to annex. They did have meetings and conversations with a number of the property owners about the annexation. In addition, some of the property owners also met independently to talk about the annexation as well. As staff understands the situation, while the property owners did not submit petitions to annex, they will not object to the annexation proceeding since it will be done at no cost to them. Staff has, um, published the required public notice of the annexation and also has sent out notices to the affected property owners by certified mail. No public hearing is required on the annexation, but public comment can be heard by any interested persons. Um, staff recommends approval of the annexation. So again, we can either annex it or not annex it. The pros, of course, will allow the property owners to connect to remaining city utilities and allow all electric users to be within city limits. The cities will, city will realize an increase in property taxes as well as an additional head tax after the twenty-twenty census. Cons will be assuming ownership of small sections of Pine Street and South Van Buren with this annexation. However, we're already maintaining these small sections of roadway. The plan of annexation and recording cost will be about two-hundred-and-fifty dollars. The staffing impact, there is none. Timeline for action, there's no specific timeline, and staff does recommend that we annex this land. Does anyone have any questions? Scott?
Uh, just one thing I want to clarify that I didn't have in the staff report. Um, we did have some meetings and discussions with the property owners. And subsequent to the annexation, the plan is to put this in a proper zoning district, which in this case, for the most part, is R one M district, because that meets what the lot sizes and configurations are there. So we will go back to the plan commission, have a public hearing, and do that after the properties have been annexed.
Anyone in the audience have anything they want to say about this particular? If you wanna come up and use the microphone, please. I know, I can't see you either. I can, I could see your hand go up over the podium, so I was excited that I remembered to ask.
Mike Hill, property is six-twenty South Van Buren, the biggest chunk there, four-point-two acres. Okay? Uh, forced annexation is right, because there's not a one of us that asked for this. We recognize you can't fight City Hall, so we've agreed to not fight City Hall. Although, as Scott just mentioned, there's things that we met with him and talked about, but we never got anything actually in writing about what the agreement was or what they promised us. If that's the word to use, promise. Firstly, none of us would be required to go on to city services, meaning water, sewer, or electric. In my case, I'm like three-hundred-and-fifty feet away from any street. So it'd be a real hardship. Plus, if you gotta go up a hill, so there's a lift station involved if I gotta go on a sewer. The property we just talked about, in fact, was, uh, agreed to be zoned in as R one or R I. I never know what hell that means. Anyway, R I M rather than R O, which is written in the ordinance. Scott says he'll get that taken care of. The other question I had is not long after this annexation stuff started, I was approached by someone who was interested in buying the property to develop it. So I checked with Scott to see if these agreements would apply to any new buyer or up buyer. We're getting a little long in the teeth here, and it's time to maybe downsize from four-point-two acres. Yeah, I guess that's all. I, I wanted to make sure it just got into writing, what, on what we just went over. Does anybody not agree with what I just said?
I think the only thing that might be problem with that is if you were to replace a sewer or septic system or something on the property and it's already annexed into the city, I don't know if you can do that.
It's three-hundred-and-fifty feet away and a lift station.
I understand that, but I think, I don't think the county would permit it. Would they, would they allow them to do that?
This would, yeah, this would be going like, oh, here, here's my man.
I just wanna know the thing, what the answer is.
If there is no sewer available within, I believe it's two-hundred feet-
Okay.
Then they can redo their septic.
They could redo it.
So his, his house is way back in, there's a three-hundred feet?
Right.
Yeah, so, so, so it's far away. And there is, and parts of these areas do not have sewer available right now. We did have some conversations about whether we could put, uh, a, a stretch in there to, you know, accommodate them in the future with some type of a, you know, an agreement or something like that. But, um, some of these, and his in particular, does not have available sewer in that area right now.
But if somebody was to come in and try and subdivide it, we'd probably wanna do that.
They would have to do it at that point, right, yep.
Okay, that, that's what I wanted to try to get out there, that those-
What I mentioned, subdivide, it's more along Van Buren Street. There's enough there for four lots at the-
Okay.
R one M, not necessarily way down where the house is. And I don't envision that anybody would do that just because of the nature of the property.
How about electric, Scott?
Electric is currently comm ed.
Yeah, well, most of them are on electric. He's one of, the one of the ones that's not on electric.
Okay, will he go on Batavia electric?
No, he would stay on comm ed right now. So it's similar-
Why would we do that?
Again, the distance, the distance on that, so, uh, it's similar what we did on, uh, Ellen and, and Roberts. So, um, when, when the new lots are connected, or are developed, if it comes forward with the development, then those lots would, yes, would connect on the city electric, yes.
And Scott, you agree with the zoning, the, it's not written right in the ordinance?
Yeah, I mean, we, you know, we, we've said this before, and I didn't have it in the staff report to elaborate directly, but, you know, it is, it is in an area that is higher density residential, so we would go back and rezone the properties into the proper zoning district, which in his case would be R one M.
And, and that happens during plan commission when there's public hearing and all the other things?
Yep.
Okay, does anyone else in the audience have anything, or did you have anything else?
Jonathan?
Okay, great, come on up.
I'm Doug Kimber and own the second biggest piece here next to Mike. When I look at this proposal, I don't see anything in it for us other than higher taxes. Yeah, and, and because I'm currently not in the city, I have nobody here to represent me. So from my point of view, I'm looking at getting taxed without representation. I don't think I'm gonna go start throwing tea in the Fox River, but it, it just doesn't seem right to me that, that I can be in a position where someone can just suddenly force me into a position where I have to pay more for taxes. The earlier discussion about the sidewalk doesn't give me the best feeling about how that tax money might be spent either. I mean, it looked like for many years, there was a plan that kinda didn't make any sense and was expensive. So I am definitely not in favor of being annexed into the city. And it was unclear just now when they were talking about the electric, if I would be forced onto the city electric as well, because I know the electric deal's not a good, a good value for the citizens, because I'm also on comm ed at the moment.
So, uh, I'll hold off for a second. I gotta get a question.
I was gonna say, the, the difference, I think, on the, the bill is about eight percent. Because that, and, and, no, on the city taxes versus what you're paying now in property taxes. You're still gonna pay school district, library, park district and everything. It'll be about eight percent different on the taxes, or eight percent of the tax overall bill in the city is for the city. So once we annex you, that'll change.
Yeah, and, and actually, because they lose the fire district, um, the effective increase is only about four percent, is what we found.
So what, what ward are we in here? What ward is this?
Might even be fifth. I believe it's the fifth, I believe it's the fifth ward.
It's me, Lucy.
Six.
Not the fourth.
Not first.
It's either fifth or sixth.
It's not fifth, it might be fourth, fourth or sixth.
Not fourth.
Then it's sixth.
I'd have, I'd have to check and see, but I believe it was the fifth ward.
It's fifth, I think it's fifth.
Is it fifth?
And so, I mean, I, I don't mean to be difficult, you know, but if, if, if you were being robbed or something and you dialed nine-one-one, Batavia police would come to you. I mean, that's, that's a service you get from the city then, correct? I mean- The county comes-
Today would be county.
Batavia stabilizes it, and then the sheriff comes and takes over. I actually made the mistake of coming here to the police station once when I needed some, some stuff. And they wouldn't deal with me, they told me I had to call the sheriff.
So that's an upside to being annexed in, is that you'd have city-
I didn't have any problem with the sheriff.
I was trying to find a positive for you.
That's all, me too. And so the same thing with fire then also than a fight.
Yeah, it's just a different way of paying for it.
Roads to get there.
It's, uh, this is part of the, um, donut holes in our annexing that we've been trying to close up. And your property and those properties in this area are just surrounded by annexed Batavia. And so that was one of the things we had directed staff to do, is to start closing up those holes in our annexation. And so that's why, the, when Scott approached us back in January, that's how this started, you know, the ball started rolling for this. And, um, I, I don't know, I, I don't know where to go from here, quite honestly. I think this is something that we want to happen, and I, I-
I mean, I think it's something the city wants to have happen. Again, because we're trying to close the donut holes, and it's not to do any damage to you or to try to increase your property taxes, we're trying to close donut holes. So what we're trying to do is clean up that-
I understand the advantage of the city, but, but it appears overwhelmingly negative.
Scott, what services are they currently getting right now from the city?
It, it depends on the property. Some of these property owners have electric, city electric already, uh, which is highly unusual. We don't normally provide electric outside the city limits. Uh, some have, uh, water, and I believe some may have sewer also. So it just depends on the particular situation. So most of these properties do have one or more utilities.
And then the streets?
Streets are being maintained by the city.
Snow plowing, maintenance, paving.
Right. I mean, some of them are township, technically township roads, but the city have been maintaining them.
In all fairness, you're going from city through township to city to plow down the block. I mean, that's-
That's one of the problems with, that's one of the problems with having all these little donut holes, as we're calling them, you know, where you got spots that aren't annexed and you- Pick up. Yeah. All that stuff.
I guess I don't understand the problem, but we're all happy with what we've got.
Every, every, everybody else in town is paying for your happiness. Because they're paying their taxes and you're getting your street plowed off of their tax dollars.
Fire danger in my properties, that's how it is.
Oh, can you come up to the mic, please? Okay, great. Oh, I didn't see you.
I'll come up. So Eric Mehl, three-twenty Pine Street. Um, we're one of the little sliver pieces that want, that the city would like to annex. So we have, we're on all city utilities, um, so, um, there really isn't a net benefit to us to become annexed other than it becomes one giant lot. I did a little, um, look back to see the difference in, in the different tax burdens I have on the two pieces of property. I don't have, um, a PowerPoint that I could show you, but if you wanna look at, I got a couple of extra copies. I wasn't sure how many people would be here, you can share those. Um, this is a comparison between the parcel that is incorporated and the parcel that isn't incorporated. And over ten years, um, the parcel that is incorporated, um, the ten-year train, change in property taxes is roughly fifty, fifty-three percent increase, um, as compared to the ten-year U.S. inflation rate of seventeen percent. So granted, everybody knows taxes go up on a, on a yearly basis. But that just gives us some perspective on, on what taxes have done in that neighborhood. In comparison, the, the unincorporated tech, uh, property tax has nearly stayed flat, um, uh, over that period. In fact, um, over the past two years, it's actually gone down. Whereas over the past two years for the incorporated tax, it's gone up, mine has gone up seventeen and a quarter percent. I can't sustain that. If, if the property tax continues to go up at that rate, um, I'll be, I'll be driven out of my house. Now, if this gets annexed in, it, granted, it just makes it one parcel, but I, I presume the parcel becomes more value, valuable, um, as a, as a taxing body as well, so.
That's what I was gonna ask you. If the property taxes are going up, does that mean that the value of your property is going up also in your comparison?
Well, you, you look at the chart, um, it, because you've got a tax rate and a value, there's two, there's, there's two variables that play in, in your tax, in your taxes every year. It's, it's the taxing rate.
And I understand where you're coming from, the value's great, but if you're, can't pay your taxes, what good does it do you, right? Yeah.
Right.
Is there a building on-
Is there a building on both of these parcels of property?
No, the building is on the city lot.
That's the answer right there.
Yeah. The only thing the township's gone up for is...
Okay, so, does anyone else have any questions of Scott? I just, you know, my comment on this would be, to Dave's point, you know, we've been maintaining the street, the residents do have some benefit that the rest of the taxpayers are paying for, we are attempting to close up the donut holes, it does make it easier to be able to subdivide the one large parcel if that comes down to it. So there are pros and cons to both of this. I don't know what the right thing is to do, so we did direct staff to do this, so Scott, any additional comments?
Yeah, and I think one of the things that we had mentioned is that, you know, we have properties here that are on city utilities. And normally, we do not extend, our policy is not to extend utilities to properties that are outside the city limits any longer. You know, in this case, we have, in a very unusual situation where you have some that are actually on our electric utility. We never extend the electric utility outside the city boundaries, so this would correct that particular situation also. So that's part of, you know, what we proposed, and this is, you know, a lot of these properties are mostly in the city limits. You know, there's several of these that are split by the city limits, which makes it difficult for building permits and things like that when we deal with, you know, somebody wants to put a shed in the backyard. That creates a different lot situation for our standpoint. So it just is simpler, it's cleaner to have them all in the city limits, similar to what we're dealing with, the one we just had earlier tonight with the piece that was behind on Chautauqua. That parcel was, you know, asking for a building permit, that parcel being in the city limits made it easier for them to actually deal with the building permit from the city's end.
So Scott, the gentleman said you made some promises to him and you're going to get those in writing to him?
We've talked about it tonight, I mean, it's in the minutes that, yes, we would do that, you know, we would agree to those things, yes, absolutely.
Because I don't see the designation for zoning listed in there.
Correct, I did not put that in the staff report. I will say that we will go back and rezone the properties to the appropriate, you know, zoning district, which is R1M for those people that fit into that, yes.
So this is...
Similar to some of these other annexations?
Just an annexation agreement, it would not...
There's not an annexation agreement for that, no.
Okay.
But we would agree to do that. I mean, that's similar to what we've done on other properties that we've annexed also. We put them in the proper zoning district just to make sure that they're whole.
Okay. Any other questions? Hey, would someone like to make a motion to recommend a city council ordinance 1849, annexing Pine Street, South Van Buren Street area?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by O'Brien, second by McFadden. We're going to do a roll call on this one.
Before we vote, I just, I went back through again and looked at it, I was trying to remember when I read this. It does say that a territory will be zoned R0, single family.
Correct.
Is that what we want it to be?
That's our default zoning, that's our default zoning district. Every time we annex property, no matter if we have an annexation agreement or anything else, it automatically goes to R0, that's by state law.
Okay.
So then we will go back and have a public hearing in front of the Plan Commission and actually do the rezoning later on, yes.
Okay.
Let's do a roll call.
Question.
Call, Callahan?
I know we've, you said we've talked about it, would those be, would those items be put into the resolution before City Council?
We have not done that within annexation ordinance. I think we've said it in the minutes that we would agree to that, so I mean, I think there's documentation to say that we would do that, so...
But why wouldn't we make it more formal?
Well, because I think, as Scott said, by state law, it starts out before it actually goes to the zoning board of appeals, or the zoning board as R0, and then it changes after it goes through that process in the public hearings.
Yeah, we can't, we can't in the annexation ordinance rezone that. We actually have to go through the process with the Plan Commission to do that.
No, not necessarily just that, but the other items that he had talked about with the electric or the sewer going onto his lot. Would that be clear?
Some of those, some of those things are governed by just either city policies or city ordinances, or in the case of the Health Department, you know, there's that distance requirement that, you know, we can't force them to go on sewer if they're within a certain distance, you know, they just, they just won't allow that.
So for instance, is, he's 300 feet from the sewer?
In your sewer.
He's 350 feet in the...
And he would not have to have the sewer requirement, correct, yes.
So he doesn't have to tie into our sanitary?
That's correct, yes.
And the electric, same thing?
He's so far away from the existing electric line, correct, yes.
But he has our city water?
He does, no, he does not have any utilities.
There's no utilities.
In his particular case, he has no city utilities right now. He's, I believe, the only one...
He would have to tie into water, or does he want to tie into water?
Uh, not, not right now, I don't want to speak for him, but I don't believe he wants to right now. When the property's subdivided, then obviously the water would connect into those new lots.
So this gentleman is going to have, except for roads, he really has no city utilities?
Correct.
But he has the opportunity.
Yes, once it's annexed, anybody can connect it to any one or all of the city utilities if they want to. Obviously, some are going to be more difficult with the sewer right now, but...
So it would benefit us to do this, because like this gentleman said, that he's looking to sell, get out, if someone does come in to develop it, then they have to tie into city utilities.
Correct, correct. And subdivision, the city would have subdivision control property, subdivision control authority over this property anyway, so they would have to get approval and presumably ask them to annex in, because they'd need utilities to have the smaller lots anyway, so...
I guess I'm just, I don't understand also, I don't mean to belabor this, but the folks here seem to be, they're opposed to it. And, but there's been no comment, no contact with you, you said you wrote, sent out a couple of emails and made contact, and nothing was responded, and then you had just some private conversations.
No, we've had conversations, meetings with some of them and conversations with some other people also, yes. But some, we did not receive any response to, yes, that's correct.
But the majority...
We did outreach by letter and then did talk to several by phone and by personal meeting.
So the majority is not at all happy with the annexation?
I wouldn't say that they're excited about it necessarily, but, you know, I think, I think that, you know, some of them understand the reasons why.
Okay.
Please come speak.
If you use the mic, please.
My name's Lillian Daisy, I live at 629 South Van Buren. I've been there less than two years. I didn't have any choice which electricity to use, the previous owner just said, hey, this is what we had. So change your name on it, I had no idea, you know. I knew it was unincorporated, I did not know everyone else on the street was not, and from what I understand, the sewer doesn't even go into that section of Van Buren. My concern is, say he sells part of his property and it's part of the city, now you guys are going to put the sewer in there for this new person. Does that mean I'm going to have to pay for sewer to go in front of my house, because I'm right across the street from him? You're putting a sewer in for one person, are you not going to want to do that to the entire section? I mean, I have my own well, my own sewer, and I'm happy with it.
Typically, we don't extend utility lines for a developer. If a developer were to come in and want to buy that property and it's annexed into the city and he wants to put three or four lots in there, he needs to pay for the extension for the utilities. Whether it be water, sewer, electric, what have you, you would not have to pay for that, the city residents would not have to pay for that, that developer has to pay for that.
Okay. There's also been discussion amongst the neighbors about sidewalk. None of us really want sidewalk in front of our houses, there's no sidewalk there now. Is that something that is in the future plan or, because I know it's in that section, it kind of starts, you know, it ends in one spot and through that section, there's no sidewalk, and then down on the subdivision, down around the corner, there's sidewalk. Not that he uses it, but...
We have no plans to extend any sidewalks there at this time, we don't have a sidewalk program. Certainly, if the property on the east side develops, those lots would be required to put sidewalk in as part of the development requirements, but we do not have any proposals or requirements for them to put sidewalks in at this time, so...
I think, you know, one of the things is, I look at this and I see that on one side there's lots that back up to this, and the houses are on Kickapoo, and the other side there's houses on Pine Street, and it's surrounded by houses that are in the city. And so let's say all of the people in this neighborhood decide they want chickens with roosters, we have no control over that. And so as you start having these little donut holes that you need to close, it just makes sense that everybody has the same rules that they have to abide by, whether it's sheds or chickens or anything else that you can do in unincorporated areas that you can't do within city limits, because surrounding this in its entirety is the city of Batavia. So that's why I would support this annexation.
You got a comment?
Yeah, hi, I'm James Walton, 625 South Van Buren. I was told by, that Scott, that if I was to go get sewer, that they would divide up the price amongst all the people on the street that don't have sewers and we'd all have to pay for that price. So I would have to, other than the taxes, I would have to pay for more sewers, according to Scott.
Scott, you want to clarify that? I think I know where it's going, but...
Yeah, it depends on what happens. I mean, you were mentioning the situation, if the developer actually extends the sewer, that's one situation. If the property owners here are looking to actually extend the sewer on their own so they can make the connection, you know, typically what happens is one or more individuals do that and they, you know, extend the sewer, and then there's what's called a recapture against property owners that aren't connected on but perhaps want to connect someday. So let's say he's at the far north end of where the sewer would be extended, he would pay for, pay for it, but he would be eligible to get what's called a recapture for a portion of the funds that were crossing the other property owners that don't want to connect at this time. So that would be how that would work in that particular situation.
So the key, the key word really in a situation like that is who wants it?
Correct.
So if the developer wants to develop that piece of land, he needs to pay for it.
Right.
If the current homeowners along there are having trouble with their septic and they want to have access to the sewer system?
Right.
They could all get together and we could come up with some way to help them with the installation of that.
Yes, exactly. You know, and again, it depends on, you know, who wants to do it. I mean, septic's fail and sometimes it's too hard to get a septic system in there. I mean, some of the lots are relatively small, so maybe they can't perk and have a septic in there, so it may be beneficial to them, but we would not allow them to connect onto the sewer right now unless they're annexed into the city.
Right.
So we have a motion and a second on the floor, and we're taking a roll call.
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Euer?
Aye.
Serone, absent. McFadden?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
Etac?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanet, absent. Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
And Brown?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Thanks, everybody, for coming down. I'm sure you're going to enjoy being in Batavia. All right, item number eight, discussion of the short-term home rentals. Alvin Stark.
Okay, so this has come up because, as we all know, Airbnb and vacation rentals by owner sites allow property owners to rent out their homes in whole or in part, they can rent a room, they can rent the whole house, they can rent adjacent structure for short-term rentals for extra income. And short-term rentals are considered residences that are rented for less than 30 consecutive days and more than 10 total nights per calendar year. And staff at the time noted that these types of rentals fell under our current bed and breakfast regulations. When the rental issue was first observed around 2015, there was only one known rental in the city limits. By 2016, it had increased to five. At the request of the COW on June 21st, 2016, the issue of short-term rentals of homeowners reviewed to determine whether or not to take any action. And the COW, after discussion, directed staff not to take any strong enforcement activities until we had some significant complaints, and no enforcement activities have taken place after that meeting. So since 2016, we've had more rentals throughout the city, and a recent search showed that there are 15 rooms, houses available on Airbnb and two on VRBO. And there have been complaints received about the transient nature of these types of rentals, as well as that some of the properties are being used as party houses. And prior complaints expressed concern about the expanding market and unregulated nature of short-term home rentals in residential areas. So, under the terms of the city zoning code and the bed and breakfast ordinance, all of these establishments would be regulated under these existing ordinances. It should be noted that short-term rental of non-owner occupied property is not allowed under the bed and breakfast ordinances. Those situations are considered hotels or inns that are not permitted in any single-family residential areas. Any short-term rental of part of an owner-occupied dwelling needs to comply with both the zoning code for bed and breakfast use, as well as the need to obtain a bed and breakfast license. That's from Title III, Chapter 11. This essentially means that those wishing to rent part of their home for temporary accommodation need to first obtain a conditional use permit from the city via the public hearing process, as well as comply with all of the requirements in the bed and breakfast license requirements. Serving of breakfast or meals is not a requirement of the code, but if they elect to do so, they must follow county health codes as well as additional health requirements in the bed and breakfast ordinance. Furthermore, these facilities are subject to the city hotel tax, which is Title III, Chapter 24. Any accommodation needs to pay a hotel tax of 3% of the grossly night receipts for each room rented. Per the terms of our agreement with the Convention and Visitors Bureau, 90% of this tax goes to pay for their service and the city retains 10% of the tax. In addition, Airbnb has recently started to assist in actively collecting hotel occupancy taxes imposed by local jurisdiction. The committee requested staff to bring this information forward again so they can provide further direction on how to proceed. That's us. We have provided, staff has provided a copy of short-term rental license agreement from the Village of Schaumburg as an example of what other communities have done in relation to these types of uses. Staff feels that our current ordinances are adequate to regulate short-term rentals. If we begin active enforcement of our codes, it is likely that many of these accommodations will cease to operate due to the complex regulations they will need to comply with operating. Pros, the enforcement of the current ordinances will allow the city to better regulate bed and breakfast uses in short-term rentals in residential areas. The city will realize some additional taxes and fees. Cons, the enforcement of these ordinances will make it costly and difficult for facilities to continue operating if they rent for more than 10 nights per year. The ordinances were geared toward regulating larger, more consistently rented facilities. Budget impact, we will realize some revenue, we'll realize some fees from the conditional use process, as we do not currently have a fee for bed and breakfast licenses, and that's something that we could implement if desired. There's no staffing impact, as we don't intend to hire staff for this program. So when I read this, Scott, and I thought that this was, it's great, because we already have something in place, we just need to enforce it. And it's pretty easy to regulate, because all you have to do is go on those sites and you can see where in town people are renting things. So if you just call them and say, hey, you can't continue to rent unless you get a permit or we're going to shut you down, is that what, like, the end result of that would be? And who would enforce that? Would it be Rhonda and Jeff Staff and...
That'd be our code enforcement division, they would enforce that.
Your group and... So does anybody have any comments? Anybody think that this doesn't work or...
With the 10-night total thing, how do we change that or make that so that way if somebody does it more than 10 nights in a year, they're still paying?
If they're doing it more than 10 nights, then it would fall under the bed and breakfast, so it's only the 10 nights or fewer is considered exempt. And that's reflective of the, essentially the federal exemption that allows you to rent up to, I think it was 10 days, and not pay taxes on some of that, you know, for your own personal residence. So that's between the 10 and the 30 days, and that's per year.
Mm-hmm.
Scott?
So does Airbnb, are they tracking that, that use in terms of, you know, quantity of rents and reporting? And is VRBO doing that as well?
I don't know about VRBO, I know that Airbnb has had cooperative agreements with municipalities to collect the occupancy taxes on behalf of municipalities and to remit those to the cities. They've done that because they know that, you know, this is becoming a big deal in some communities and they're starting to crack down on these, and so they feel that if they at least do that, that, you know, prevents the crackdown. That's obviously a business model for them, so...
There was actually a Crane Chicago Business article that says that in the year 2017, Airbnb paid $6.9 million in those types of taxes. They have agreements with four different municipalities in the city of Chicago.
And Illinois.
Mark?
Can I make it clear? When you say owner occupied, meaning I can't have a second house and rent out that second house, or I have to be in the house when I'm renting?
You have to live on, your primary residence has to be on the premises that you're renting.
Okay, but you don't have to be there. That's what I'm trying to understand. Do you have to be there when you rent it out in order to fall under bed and breakfast?
I don't believe you have to actually be there at the time that you're renting it, but it has to be your primary residence, yeah.
So, if you wanted to rent your house during the Batavia triathlon, and you weren't gonna be home for the weekend?
Correct.
You would still own the house, but someone else could rent it for the weekend?
Sure, I'm just trying to understand some of the stuff, because there's, it was confusing with the bed and breakfast. So, I mean, I guess my challenge there is that we do have, there's people in town that, it is their primary residence, but they're not there all the time, so they will exceed the 10. I don't know if it's really gonna change and make something not a party house, just because if they want to make a bunch of money off of it, then they're gonna follow the regulations, and they'll make their money off of it. And it's not gonna stop it from being a party house. Call the 911 stops it from being a party house, and we go and handle it the way anybody should. If somebody's lighting off fireworks, which that's coming up soon, you call 911, and we go, and we stop people from doing that. So, I don't think that this changes that aspect of it.
We don't regulate the, you know, the, who's actually going in there, and what they're actually doing. If there's something that's, you know, they're, you know, creating a nuisance, then they would call the police department. The police department come and, you know, crack down on that situation. So, this, the bed and breakfast ordinance does not address that type of behavior, essentially, right? You know, no different than if it was a hotel, and somebody rents a hotel, and they have a party in a hotel. We don't regulate that.
Yeah. So, I don't know that it, so, I know that was one of the, the points that was made, but I guess I just wonder about people that, hey, it's an extra revenue stream, and if we're making it more difficult, or maybe impossible, and again, topic came up already tonight, it's increasing in taxes, and it's like, okay, I can't live the way I was wanting to live, because now I don't have this extra income stream, I'm retired, whatever happened to me, then I'm out of the state, and now we have maybe an abandoned property. I mean, there's things that'll happen, you know, people are gonna just leave. It's happening already that people are leaving the state, because we continue to regulate and tax.
I will once say one thing. Because it would fall under the bed and breakfast license, if we have repeated incidents where they're just, you know, the ownership is not controlling it, we could, in theory, revoke the bed and breakfast license. So, if we're getting, you know, somebody that keeps doing illegal things on the property, then yeah, that would be a justification to revoke that bed and breakfast license.
Anyone else? Mike?
It doesn't sound like it's a bad thing, doing this. I mean, it says here that it generated $40,000 tax revenue in 2017, and, I mean, it's, I, I think, I think this is not a bad thing for the city. And so, we have a thing in place, so we should have it, have what we have in place. I don't think we need to rule over it. I don't know how else to say it. Losing my words here, but I think this is good for the city. I think if, like, like, like Mark says, if people get unruly, just call 911. If it's a continuation, continually happens, well, then maybe they don't do it anymore. But I think it's not a bad thing for the city.
I think it's a great idea that we know who is renting out their properties for short-term rentals. I think that, I mean, we, we had this ordinance written, we just haven't been enforcing it. And so, to be able to know where these properties are, and if they're, and being able to revoke their ability to use it as a conditional use to be, makes total sense. Mr. Mayor, you had something to say?
Yeah, I, I have no problems with this ordinance. I think it's a good idea. I, I will tell you, I have received calls for about three different times for one particular street, where houses they claim are not being rented for people staying overnight, they're being rented for party centers. And they're renting out the basement, or the backyard, or whatever they're doing, and they're having these parties, and the neighbors are not at all happy about the party. And one even pointed out to me where I could go online and look at the ad that was on, online, to rent this house in Batavia, and have your party, minimum 70 minutes. Then you paid by the hour, or for every hour that you were there, you paid some more fee. I remember this one situation. But there were several houses on the same street that kinda had this thing going. And it was an interesting, and the neighbors did call and complain to me about it.
Did we, did we check that out? Was that...
Yeah, I think we've looked into it. You know, we, they never called us when the parties were going on. I think we got called kind of after the fact, required by...
Okay, Mark, did you have something else?
Yeah, maybe I'm just not reading it right. If you're saying somebody wants to rent it out more than 10 total nights in a year, they'd be considered a hotel, and you couldn't do that in your property?
No, if they're renting more than 10 nights and less than 30, that's considered a bed and breakfast. Hotel is if they do not live on the premises. Hotel or in is if they do not live on the premises at all.
Okay.
You know, they're, if it's a, you know, second dwelling that they have, and they're renting it out, that would be considered a hotel or an in under our bed and breakfast ordinance, unless they're renting it more than 30 days, which is then a lease. So, that's, that's why it's a short term.
That's 30 consecutive days, not 30 individually.
30 consecutive days, correct. Then it's considered a lease.
Helen, you had a...
I look at it, and I read it, and it says, "The operator, the owner of the bed and breakfast establishment, or the owner's agent, who is required by the act to reside in the bed and breakfast establishment." So, that means you can't leave and go to Florida for three months and rent it out a week at a time while you're in Florida. That's, I think, that's what I think you're talking about.
Your primary residence could still be there. If you spend nine months of the year, that's still your primary residence.
You don't have to be on premises to rent it out under this ordinance. You can be in Florida and decide to rent your house for a week, and you would still fall into this, this ordinance. But you'd have to make sure you registered it with the city, that you get that conditional use.
I'm gonna look at the ordinance just to make sure.
I mean, I'm reading what was given to us, in 311-1 definitions.
Operator occupied residence providing accommodations for a charge to the public with no more than five guest rooms for rent, in operation for no more than, more than 10 nights in a 12-month period.
Yeah, and that's the part I was asking about, too. It seems like you can't do more than 10 nights for the entire year, and that's...
And then operator says, "The owner of the bed and breakfast establishment, or the owner's agent, who is required by the act to reside in the bed and breakfast establishment, or on contiguous property, and to manage the operation of the establishment." I stand corrected. I believe that they would have to live on the premises at the time, if they're renting it out.
They have to live there, or be present?
Somebody has to be on the premises. I think somebody would have to be on the premises.
Then, then no.
Yes, and they're renting it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a problem.
That's what I'm saying, is, is that doesn't fit what I understand some people are doing with, you know, either a condo unit, or a townhouse.
It's like a VRBO that would not be allowed under that.
And I think the way it's written, it says that it has to be for more than 10 days, because if it's less than 10 days, it doesn't fall under this. If it's less than 10 days within a year, it does not part of, this doesn't even apply.
It's not a bed and breakfast, then, right?
If it's over 30 days...
Over 10. If it's over, if it's over 10 days, then it falls under the bed and breakfast regulations.
Is there a limit to the amount of time during the year in a bed and breakfast?
Not, no, I don't believe there is.
So, if the guy, if, if somebody rents it for two weeks, they have to be on site with these people in their home.
Either in their home, or in an adjacent property.
In an adjacent property next door.
That's what it says in the ordinance.
And, and then becomes a bed and breakfast.
Correct.
Not a VRBO.
Correct. If they rent, if they're gonna rent out their house, and they're not gonna live there, based on definitions, my interpretation is that that is not gonna be a bed and breakfast. That would be an in.
We should probably tighten that ordinance up.
I agree. I think maybe we should take a look at that language, and maybe put it in front of the city attorney, and see if what's intended is, is...
And is that what we want? Do we want to be able to allow somebody that wants to live here for nine months out of the year, and in the three months that they're gone, rent it out to, you know, somebody a week, or two weeks at a time?
The question is, is that still an owner-occupied home?
Right.
Even if they are not physically present within it, because it's their primary residence?
Right.
We can review that.
Yeah.
We want to allow that.
Right, and that's what my question is. Is that what we want this to be, or do we want it to be what's written there?
And that's where I struggle, is, you know, if I'm, my neighbor's not looking to do this, but I'm gonna pick on them. You know, if my neighbor was doing this, how happy would I be that all of a sudden, there's a lot of different people going in and out of my neighbor's house?
Well, and that's...
It's not like you live in a beach...
It's out of my control.
In a beach community.
That's the issue with the house the mayor is talking about, is, I don't know for certain, but I believe that it's not occupied by the owner.
Right.
And it just gets rented out, room, or the whole place, whatever you want. And, you know, it'll be a weekend, well, there'll be eight, 10 cars in the driveway, because it's a big place, and sleeps lots of people. Which...
So, so do we have, does police get called a lot on, on these VRBOs?
I'll defer to the chief on that.
Honestly, I don't have a good solid answer on that. And we get called, the house we call them. They may be the residents, they may not be the residents, but I don't have definitive data on that.
We could hear you. Scott, do we, right now, I've lost track. Do we have a minimum amount of time a homeowner can rent their home and be on VRBO?
A minimum amount of time and be on VRBO, or, or, well...
So, for three months out of the year?
Yes.
You, there's no concern about renting to one person for three months out of the year, for example? I mean, people do that...
Correct, but they would have to, based on the definitions, we believe they would have to live on the premises during that rental period.
So, we're saying that people can't rent their homes for half a year?
They can rent them as long as it's 30 days or greater.
Okay, that's what I'm wanting.
30 consecutive days or greater, because then it's considered a lease.
Right, minimum, okay.
Right.
Got it.
If they, if they go to Florida for three months, and they rent it out to a single entity for three months, or 30 days, that's okay.
That's right.
Scott, I think that what I find very interesting, as I read through this again, is that we highly regulate, I mean, between fire extinguishers, and lighted staircases, and everything else. And so, it really, it's not like we're a beach community, you know, where, you know, everyone wants to, yeah, we do have the river, and we're number 48.
Quarry.
In the quarry. So, I, I'm not sure what the right things are to do. Marty, you had something to say?
Well, I was, the regulations, if we're talking about trying to prevent party houses and that sort of stuff, we already have ordinances on the books for those, because I think there's probably a lot more, it's probably a lot more common that neighbors are calling on the neighbors that do live there year-round, that you can't do anything about. So, if we're talking about trying to do this to kind of, you, that might happen once in a while, but you still have noise ordinances, and public intoxication, and all those other laws that are already out there for dealing with a house that has undesirable activities that are going on. I don't think you necessarily need regulations for that, because there, there already are regulations. But the, what the goal should be is to quantify when you are out of your, out of town. It does make sense that you should be able to use your house for extra income, if that's the, that's the, kind of, the new way.
But don't you, don't you, or do you think that it should be, you should have to have a conditional use permit, so that the neighbors know, or you, I mean, because it has to be posted, it has to, you have to maintain certain things, there's gotta be a fire extinguisher, there's, there's things that you have to do, and, and in my mind, it's only fair. I mean, if you're gonna rent your house...
Yes, and that's why I'm saying, for those reasons, because there's an extra social, an extra social contract that goes along with it, that you have people, not just guests at your house, but are actually, have some expectations of safety, and, and those type of issues. So, those are the reasons why we would support it, not necessarily for preventing party houses.
Right. Scott?
Well, I think just to protect those people that are buying homes in the, you know, in, in the area. I mean, for this, this party house, whatever this is, I mean, imagine someone moving in next door, and they have zero control over, you know, you know, party of the week that's going on there, or the hour, 70 minutes, or whatever it is. I mean, that, there needs to be, there needs to be some contingency that we have as, as a, as a city to be able to, to help regulate that.
Yeah, I think it's, it's twofold. It's what Scott says there, but it's also for protection of the people that are renting this also. I mean, some of these things with fire extinguishers, and exit lighting, and things like that, you know, I'm going into an unfamiliar house. I don't know what's going on in there. If there's a fire, do I know how to get out of there? I'm not particularly familiar with it. It's not like a hotel, where they have the lights and things like that. So, some of these things are to protect the people that are actually renting it as well. So, that's why some of that was put into place.
It's a, it's an interesting scenario, because we've done Airbnb, but it's always been a separate, like, the owner's house is here, and here's the house we've stayed in, and it has all of that, like, hotel-like qualities. But when you get into renting a bedroom and a bathroom in someone's house, then it really is a whole, like, different level of things. Did, Ellie, did you have your hand up? I'm sorry. Oh, Tony.
We received a letter from the Realtor Association, and I'm, I'm trying to figure out what is their interest in this. You know, it's, I don't think, are they promoting the use of Airbnb, and for, for investors to come and buy houses that they can make a profit on by doing Airbnb with them, and never intending to live in town?
Wasn't quite clear on what their, their point was on, on some of that, other than just to give us some general background and statistical information regarding...
But it was clearly in support of short-term rentals. You know, I don't see, I don't think they're getting a commission on, from Airbnb, as far as I know.
Maybe just property rights in general?
It's another reason to buy a home.
Right.
To use it for that.
I think there are... Yeah, not to live there, but to use it for that. So, to run a business in a residential area. I, I got a problem with that.
I just think I, I just think I, I know what you're saying there. I mean, nobody can choose their neighbors. There's nothing that stops me from having a party at my house every night, as long as I stay within the, within the regulations. I'm sure Laura would call 911 often, me. But, it just seems like, again, it's like, I know what you're saying about safety and stuff like that, but it's like taking away, especially for somebody that's like gonna be away for a month or two, and they should be able to do stuff, and it allows people the extra income. And if you're gonna sit there and say, "Well, no, you have to go do, follow these other rules," and, and again, this is, in my opinion, poorly written, because it still looks to me like you can't do it for more than 10 days in a 12-month period, which would be, would shut everybody's house.
Yeah, the 10 days is which you're exempt from the bed and breakfast. So, if anybody can rent their home for 10 days, and not have to comply with the bed and breakfast ordinance, once you're over 10 days, you have to comply with the bed and breakfast ordinance, unless you're renting it for 30 consecutive days, and then that's a lease.
And does, I don't expect everybody to know everything about Airbnb. Does Airbnb do things as a lease if it's gonna be 30 days? Do they...
I don't know. I mean, they, they may enter into some that are like that, potentially. You know, it's, I don't think that's typical, but...
Just speaking from experience, when we were contemplating doing this with our house in Florida, we have to comply with the St. Pete Beach ordinances, and they're very stringent. You can't just randomly rent your house. And so, and that is a beach town. So, I, I think that, you know, we're, we're doing our neighbors a favor by doing this. I would hate it if it was a revolving door of people, you know, every weekend, new people showing up renting the house next door to me, if the owners weren't there. So, anybody else?
Fortunately for me, it hasn't been my experience. My neighbor does do it, and there's been zero issues.
What's his address?
What is the name on that again? Can you supply the city with that?
You know, everybody in Batavia is my neighbor.
Wow. Powered by?
Okay, so, we need to, we're having this discussion, and I guess we need to give direction to staff in terms of if we want to make any changes to the way that this is worded, and then additionally, after it's changed, whether we want to start enforcing this. Is that the direction you're looking for, Scott?
Yeah, I think we could probably just get the interpretation from the city attorney about it. We may not need to actually amend the text.
Right.
It'd just be maybe an interpretation.
That's really kind of like my big question, is, because that is a sticking point, because if you're gonna want to decide to live somewhere else for three months out of the year, and rent your house while you're gone, and not do it to the same person for the entirety of the time, would you be able to do it with this ordinance?
So, we'll get clarification on that, and then when staff comes back, then we can make a decision as to whether we want to enforce it, and how, and... Thank you.
Thanks.
Item number nine, which is 18-81-R, authorizing the execution of a reciprocal reporting agreement between the City of Batavia Police Department and Batavia School District 101. Alderman Etic.
Yes, okay. This is, the catalyst for this, I believe, was a change in the state law. I don't know exactly when the state law changed, but the last time we updated this was 2003. But it, the objectives... But it, the objective's to encourage open communication between the police department and school district in order to maintain safety in our schools. And so, the attorneys for the City of Batavia Public Schools came up with this agreement, and it, the public school board has approved it. Chief, would you like to kind of point out the new changes and...
Well, there have been lots of changes since 2003.
Okay.
Specifically to the Juvenile Court Act of 1987, which has been amended a number of times since then, and more specifically to the Illinois School Code, which really kind of went through a, almost a comprehensive overhaul back in 2014. So, this effort started in 2014 and started installed since that time. Really changes, the substantive changes pertain mostly to communication regarding threats to schools, threats to children in schools, threats to school officials, and it's, it's a very, of utmost importance for us to be able to communicate and keep the lines of communication open between the school when they hear things and we hear things so that we can take proactive countermeasures, as we have done in the past.
And meanwhile, protecting the privacy of the students.
Absolutely.
Okay. Are there any questions? Marty?
There was only one kind of term in here that I was just, it's undefined, so I know what it means, but I don't know who else would know what it means in a, in this kind of setting with item number under four of the agreement, the gang activity immediately upon receipt any report of suspected gang activity. I didn't know how that could be defined.
Uh, well, it could be, I guess it's somewhat ambiguous, but essentially meaning affiliation with a gang, known affiliation with a gang, you know, graffiti, or acknowledgement to other students that they are participants in, in a gang actively, and all the things that go along with that, weapons, drugs, those sorts of things.
Yeah, I just, I could see someone saying, oh, just because of the way they're dressed or something along those lines, that, does that make it something that they would want to report?
I, I, yeah, I couldn't answer that definitively for you.
I know.
But it would probably be, you know, based on totality of, of the circumstances at the time.
Are there any other questions? All right. Would someone like to, well, make a motion to recommend to council the approval of Resolution 18-81-R authorizing the execution of a reciprocal reporting agreement between the City of Batavia Police Department and the Batavia Public School District 101?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. O'Brien and Malley, is that it? Okay.
Consent?
Ah, yes.
Okay. Item number 11 is the presentation on the communication plans for the City of Batavia. Alderman, Wolf.
Thank you. We've talked about this since we hired Chris, that we were going to come up with a more codified plan so that we could have it down on paper and then try to follow it as close as we can. I guess, let's let Chris go from here.
Can, can I say a few words, introduction? So, very much appreciate that as I came on board and we were, I was going through the budget process the very first time, I think one of the needs that was identified was to improve the means and types of and amount of communication that the city had to engage both residents and business and even the aldermen, and, and keeping everyone informed. And so, in April of 2017, we brought Chris Kudworth on board as Communication Coordinator, and this presentation is meant to illustrate the types of communication programs that Chris has up to this point implemented. But as much as it is going over what has been implemented, please also see this as an opportunity for you to give feedback and ideas on how we can improve upon what we've started here and what types of things you'd like to see in the future. So, I'll turn it over to Chris.
And as always, it's behaving a little differently in a PC than it is in a Mac. But you'll be able to see it here fine.
Do you, I think you just click on, at the bottom right-hand side of the screen, there's a little thing that looks like a... Go left from there. Keep going. There, oh, there, yeah.
Okay. It always looks a little different. So, as Laura described, what we'll look at tonight are some of the structural categories of what we have developed and where those are headed. One of the important things to understand going into any communications plan is what are your strategic areas? And these categories of communication sort of give a description of how the city engages with the public, both responsibly and in terms of trying to draw back, you know, dispense information. So, the strategic areas really are the city services, you know, to inform our residents and businesses. And you look down low there, and there's the administration, community development, economic development, finance, fire, police, human resources, IT, and, and public works. The next in line is a sort of a structure of what are our objectives, and it's really, what is the economic base and how does economic development occur and drives our business and tax base? The next strategic area is our community growth and change. How is the community adapting, evolving to economic trends, our own infrastructure, things like that? And this includes our own proposals that are brought to us, as well as city initiatives to drive certain types of activity in town. And of course, tourism and visitation, the way that city presents itself in terms of an attraction to bring both businesses and visitors as well as residents. Why would people want to live here? This, as we'll look at, is done coordinatively with other organizations in town. And the one we maybe don't want to think about, but we have to think deeply about, is our emergencies. And those are incidents. And in the process of getting trained and engaged in this area, I've been through several levels of incident command system training so that I better understand the FEMA-directed methods and operational systems for collaborating with our police, fire, and public works, which, beyond that, there are also many roles even for other departments within the city. But in the event of every emergency, you have to understand whether it's, you know, a local, a regional, or a national. And sometimes even within that scope, there are differences that occur within our community where sometimes an external force may come in and be the incident commander on that, and then, how does that rank our objectives with what needs to be communicated to media, to the public, and to other people? So, one of our primary tools of engagement in all this, and our outward-facing thing, you know, websites have changed dramatically over the last 20 years, when they first started as a sort of a business card for whoever, whoever's activity it was. And now, their principal means of engagement, dispensation of information. So, as this primary form of engagement evolves, we've had a chance to look this year at what works and what doesn't, and where we need to improve. And I can share with you that, you know, not only Laura, but our IT department, the departments within the City of Batavia, we have consistent meetings about different people's needs. And so, you're looking at kind of two things here, the structure of the website, and who it represents, and how, and also then the development. What's the appeal? How could we make it look better? How can we make it transform to a tool for people who are both within and outside of our community? And we'll explain why those roles are important. It also does the roles of documentation and notification, all our agendas, our proposals, our FOIAs. Then, we've also done some things with information value, the relevancy and the currency. And one of the initiatives we've engaged in now are creating case studies that can be posted to our website and at will, or the drop of a hat, sent out by our economic development consultant to prospective businesses that are looking in our community. And we're developing those across a broad spectrum of economic forces in our town, from industry to commerce, manufacturing, retail, restaurants, all these sorts of types of businesses. We're both trying to humanize them and show people what great things are here, but also provide tools so that when we need to communicate with people who are looking at Batavia as a source of, place of business. And of course, the inbound, outbound marketing, the tourism visitation, and we'll get to that. In some people's minds, when they engage with Batavia, the website is Batavia. So, we need to look at it that way and make sure we're a customer-facing website so that they feel like it's theirs and there's a sense of ownership there. And of course, the City of Batavia website, we've done some really interesting and good things. The police department has been wonderful in terms of collaborating with our engineering and public work department to implement a system so that power outages are notified very rapidly now. And it's even segmented into groups and areas of town so that when something occurs, those people know it's my section of town. There are some limits to that. We can't be individualized, we don't have every email or every text of every citizen in town, but they can look at the website and get that news through an alert. And then, to sort of close here, the collaboration in some of these case studies that we're doing are being done in, basically, concert with some other organizations in town. We're all familiar with the blessings and curses of social media. Right now, what the City of Batavia uses as its primary sources for social media communication, our Facebook, our Twitter account, there's about, we've grown by about 1,000 users on our Facebook page in the last year. Our Twitter accounts at about 3,900 users, and our LinkedIn count is brand-new. So, it's still growing, and we've been posting some of these case studies and building that network, and that's a work unto itself. And one of the things that we've begun to do is start to invite people beyond our direct community partners to look at possibly becoming advocates for the City of Batavia through, across their business networks like LinkedIn, where they would agree and be interested in sharing some of that. And so, that, that's an area we want to grow. And you can see the roles here, I don't need to delineate them necessarily too deeply, but, you know, social media, it's an information service, it's a promotion tool, it's interactive. So, as you know, we've created a whole series of videos this year, some have been on fire education to show the training that our fire department goes through. But we also do some lighter stuff that's intended to really show the character and personality of the city, because a lot of studies have shown that people are interested in, in that feeling of ownership and engagement and a pleasant association with the media sites that they choose. So, we've tried to introduce some content that, that falls along that category. And one of the things that, you know, I would say self-critically that I want to use more of is our analytics. And one of the things that we have installed for measurement of social media is that software called Meltwater. And what that does is gives us a daily assessment, and I send out samples of that, it's by no means comprehensive. But what it also does is actually gives us a monetary ROI for the earned media or earned social media we get. So, if we post things and it grows and goes viral, we can see the actual return on investment for that. And of course, one of the things that has been really, really important to us, and I'll say a public thank you to all of our other governmental and partner organizations in town, the Chamber and Main Street, the Library, the School District, BATV, the Park District, all of those partners, we meet monthly to talk about our separate initiatives, which makes all our own individual initiatives stronger because we have sort of a agreement to share these bits of information across social media networks. What that does is it circumvents the Facebook forcing you to, the Facebook practice of forcing you to, you know, buy reach. And instead, we are doing that on a local and regional basis by agreeing when there's a high priority item, we will promote that. I talked a little bit about these case studies and business videos. We're focusing on, sorry, new businesses. We're doing case studies to focus on business retention. So, I've interviewed, you know, three of the restaurants here on River Street, and we did a, a prior one on Katrina and Shine and the Tea Tree. I've been out to talk to Cast Aluminum Solutions and toured their plant, working with their engineers and their marketing director to develop a case study that talks about the reason why their business is successful here in Batavia, and what Batavia represents potentially for other businesses that will want to come here as manufacturers. And the goal is to turn some of those case studies around into earned media and pitch these through the Meltwater software, which gives me absolute reach to over 450,000 journalists, editors, bloggers, everything across the country. So, we can pitch these stories to people that might want to write about our businesses. And so, that's why we did that really interesting case study on Kluber, because they have a 30th anniversary coming up. They revitalized a building in downtown Batavia. Together, those make a nice news peg for the Daily Herald Business Ledger, or Crane Chicago Business, or the King County Chronicle. And so, I have regular conversations with those journalists and media in order to share these potential. Some of them get picked up, some of them don't. That's the nature of PR. And of course, one of the content modes that everybody's talking about these days are video. And so, I'm also talking with BATV about additional projects, and one of those, I'm going to work with Mayor Shoki on some of the aspects of change and the dramatic ways Batavia's changed in the past and what it looks like these days. And we're very excited about doing that. I'm going to put sort of an interesting number and a face on some of this. If you look at the red content down at the bottom there, you know, if we were to set a goal of bringing in 10 new businesses that brought in $100,000 in tax revenue in maybe a two-year period, we'd be at $1 million in new revenue. You know, we all know the impact of losing Sams this year, and what can we do? What incrementally can we do? And that's where some of the things that we're now initiating are targeted. You know, the economic development landing page, the main page on there has been redrawn. It's brought in our partners like the Chamber and Main Street so that there are multiple touchpoints. It all is to support our consultant, and Chris Aston, who's out there and assured me yesterday when I was talking with him, because we are so busy right now, we're getting so many inquiries. So, the heavy-duty economy and some other factors are really pointing things toward Batavia, and that's a good thing. But we want to be in a position where we can respond really effectively, strongly, and professionally so that those people, whether the real estate brokers or the business leaders themselves, get an instant good impression. And that's one of the goals for the website redesign next year, is to automate some of that so that we're assured that that goes out and we, we make an effective aspect of that. And the other things we can try to do is qualify leads and, and get people engaged with us on our website through that. I talked a little bit about these Batavia Communications Collaborative. This is a very real dynamic. These people are all excellent professionals, and we actually share their content on our site because it often informs the public on important issues, whether it's something to do with school district, you know, events or activities, or, you know, Batavia Park District. We're really, really trying to be content-free in terms of not being jealous of each other, but seeing this as a true collaborative thing. And that takes time to develop. One of the things I think we've had to do is sort of prove ourselves from the city communication standpoint in terms of performance, follow-up, follow-through with all these organizations. Because you know, with all the events that Main Street does and all the things that Chamber are doing, there's a constant flow of activity going on here, and that's all very positive and sends out a great image about our city. One of the upcoming projects that we're working together on is a unified community calendar. And I finished up a webinar today on the nature of this and some of its benefits. We're looking at having 10 organizations involved in this. We'll be highlighting at events, there'll be a comprehensive community calendar that we can all share on each respective website. And the whole goal of the thing is to put together something where everyone's best interests are served. And we want everyone to have selfish interests in this so that they push their content. Their content will be automatically integrated... Their content will be automatically integrated from their website to this community calendar, so there's no double entry, and we'll be able to even share this out amongst the business community and make it an amenity that anybody who looks at Batavia sees this, says those people have their stuff together, they're all working well, and that sounds like a community I'd like to have my business in, or I'd like to come visit. And if you come to Batavia to see our windmills, or you come to Batavia to see Fermilab, you'll also be able to see, oh my gosh, there's really great things going on, and oh, look, there's restaurants here, there are, you know, things to do. And that's the objective there. And something wrong with the transfer here, but basically that says economic development. And these are the destination Batavia concept here that I'm advocating, that we're advocating as a way to look at this. If we're going to bring people to town or get people in town to use our community, we want to view Batavia as a destination. Our ultimate goal, when we have a hotel in town someday, is to be integrated like that with the, you know, the Aurora Area Business and Tourism Department. And so looking ahead, you know, maybe a year, two, three years, what we need to position ourselves for is to get people to look at us as the place they want to come. So there's the economic development side of that, and there's also the tourism side of that. And there are five things that we've sort of identified that are ready-made, and there's already significant progress on several of these. So for example, the City of Batavia Windmills, our GIS analyst, Michael Kamen, has already developed a GIS-driven map of our windmills. And over the last four to six months, we developed an intergovernmental agreement with the library to be able to borrow and resource their materials. So that's a collaboration between two resource drivers, and we're going to be able to invite people to town to walk around like they're doing with the bulldogs now and learn about our windmills. And that's a really marketable thing when it comes down to, for people to come to town and find things to do. Fermilab is going to be in our, they've indicated they're interested in our community calendar, and we want to feature them on our destination Batavia aspect. Depot Museum, of course, with its expansion. Our arts and culture is very strong in Batavia, so we want to emphasize that, and we've had conversations with Water Street about being involved in that. And of course, our developing opportunity with the Batavia Flag Memorial. So these are some of the aspects of how we're going about this idea of presenting Batavia and communicating what it is in its totality. And I apologize, I don't know why this does this on the screen, but it says component communications, and these are the avenues. So these are some of the existing things that we've sort of developed over the last year. Obviously, Neighbors Magazine, we saw in the community survey that about 80% of our residents take time to read that. And that's a very valuable survey that Laura and our team did, because we're going into a mode where we're going to say, we see what you said, and this is how we fulfill it, or this is how we plan to fulfill it. And there is an enormous amount of information in there. It's taken time to go through there and look at what opportunities it's presented to us. We learned everything from what media people read to, you know, what they think of, you know, community, city services. So our Batavia newsletter goes out every week, and that's sort of a trusted resource, and one of our goals is to increase the user-ship on that. We're coming up on our mayor's historical perspectives. We have a really great partner and attribute in BATV, and they are really well-respected for what they do, and we are going to collaborate on the mayor's videos as well as some other projects. And I've mentioned Meltwater, the media and proactive marketing, and then of course, there's the traditional public information, media pitches, earned media and crisis management stuff that I kind of, we kind of do on a daily basis, putting together press releases, putting out social media announcements and that sort of thing. So I've talked through this rather rapidly, and I wanted to make sure that we sort of covered all this, but we really do want to sort of use this as a launching place for, you know, discourse, for discussion, for ideas, for criticism, for, you know, your take on your impression. I'm not going to stand here and pretend or say that I've done everything perfectly this year, that's for sure, it's not. But what we have tried to do is take ideas that come to us, and there have been many ideas that have come to us, both from staff, even from the community. I listen, you know, I watch the broadcasts, you know, how can we communicate aspects of the proposals that are on our shelf? How can we answer factually social media questions that are raised? You know, some are critical, some are complimentary. So if any of you have any ideas, yeah?
I got three things. First, I love how this is broken down. It's really well thought out. It's nice and granular, marketing term, but I really like how you've done that. The second thing is, which is kind of a sidebar that I think we need to talk about down the road, is we talked about hotel, we talked about bed and breakfast stuff, we talked about taxes tonight, and we give a lion's share of our, of the hotel tax to the Aurora...
Ninety percent.
Ninety percent. Is that something we want to revisit down the road, and when can we revisit that down the road?
We recent, this year, we renewed our agreement, renewed a five-year agreement.
Is there an out clause in that, in case Hilton decides they want to move in downtown?
We...
There are some benefits to being part of that.
Yeah, I mean, we haven't paid anything into it in... I understand that, but if Hilton decides they want to be downtown, thanks, you know? I mean, you want to give up?
Maybe, so it's worth a discussion.
But we're getting zero today, and if we get 1 percent... I know, I'm saying, I'm just saying, that's something to think about.
It's something to think about in the future, but I have been, and I have forwarded to all of you the things that Aurora Convention and Visitors Bureau has been doing lately, and I think that there has been a drastic improvement in the quality of their communications and the number of their communications, and I really think that they're putting forth a renewed effort. So over the course of that time, we can do an assessment as to whether they are adding the value.
Yeah, I just, something to put on the radar screen. That's just, because it's come up a couple times tonight, anyway. The last thing, too, is you talked about Meltwater, and I love what they're doing there in proactive marketing. And so my question is, is there a marketing automation component to Meltwater?
Not in the version we have.
Okay. Because that's something that I'd love to talk about, especially if we're talking about qualified leads and talking about doing passive tracking, you know, of those people coming in. If we have, you know, if we're having case studies that are on the site, and as opposed to going to those, you know, those journalism outlets, which is great, it's a great channel for us to look at, but if we've got direct, you know, direct hits coming from people, we need to, you know, they need to punch the ticket and give us some information, so that can go to Chris, so he can follow up, and we can be tracking those people and their engagement.
We're right in line on that.
Okay.
I totally agree, and that's a real objective. And I've asked and interviewed the Civic Plus Resources, you know, we've got an account manager, and I said, when we redesign our site, you know, there are several things that I'd like to see us be able to do, that most traditional sites, you know, I kind of come from a, I work for a pay-per-click, you know, thing, and all the landing pages and all that, and right now, we don't have, within the module, we have, we don't have that capability. And so it's sort of frustrating, because it all comes down to call to action, right? You know, what are we trying to get people to do when they come to our site? If the website to some people is Batavia, what is that then? How are we inviting them to engage with us? And just from a broad explanation standpoint, what Scott's pointing out is that if there are people tapping on your site and downloading PDFs, we want to know who those people are, so that when they tap on that and they download it, phoom, a message goes to them and says, hey, you know, we're glad you're interested in Batavia, you know, we'll, here's an email, or we can reach out to you, or here's something additional, get our free, you know, guide to Batavia. You know, if it's a tourism thing, if it's a business thing, we send them out this thing, here's our business profile. Here's, you know, exactly how businesses in Batavia, you know, where you can locate, all those sort of things. Because busy executives, they don't want to have to go back and look and look and look, they want to get it. And so that's what we want to do. That's where we want to get to, right? That's really an excellent point.
And the other half of that, too, is not only do they get that and we know who it is, we can have, you know, a notification sent to Chris or whomever saying, hey, Hilton just downloaded, you know, this PDF, you need to give him a call, so.
And just to add to that bit of conversation, the other way that we've begun to look at this a little bit is that we have so many different kinds of people approaching the city, and we have so many great partners here, like the Chamber or the Main Street. And not everybody wants to engage the same way. And that, you know, it may be a business owner of one type who might want to talk to Chamber, you know? And so we want to look at these leads from the standpoint of where are they best served? That's no criticism of Chris, because that's how people operate. They all engage in different ways, and that's why your website has to be somewhat diverse, but also transparent. And Laura has shared a number of good examples of websites. One of the fun ones we look at is Cody, Wyoming. We always look at Cody, Wyoming. It's this airy, breathy kind of thing, yet it's very tangible what they want you to do. They're interested in business coming to town, and they let you know it. But they also say, hey, while you're here, you're going to breathe some great air, and you're going to stick your toes in some cold water. And, oh my gosh, you go, that's a place I want to go. And there's some places up in the northeast and that sort of thing. So we're looking at those already from the standpoint, because as Mayor has so often pointed out, and I've heard it from all of you as well, there are so many great things. We were out talking to the park district last night, so many great things here. We just need to highlight these and make them really, really accessible. Yes?
I have a couple, multiple things, not as many as Scott, I'm sure. First, how, didn't we redesign our website like three years ago, and how did we so badly miss the mark? This is a question that's kind of like been burning in the back of my brain, because, I mean, I remember when we redesigned it, and it was, I mean, it was recently, and it was...
The last few years.
Yeah, and we really missed the mark on that. And how are we going to know that we don't do that again? This is a concern of mine, because we, when we chose this web design firm, it was like, oh, they've done all these other cities, and aren't they grand? And then this is what we have, which is not anything any of us ever loved, so.
Well, that's, I believe, that's when, through the interview process, that was a keen discussion in going forward and being, I guess, my answer to you would be, it's the tangible things that we identify as priorities that drive the design of a website, and we need to know what we want people to do. So to answer your question, if you don't feel like the current website is a success, then it could, that kind of thing can stem from, okay, well, what were we trying to get people to do, and how has that changed over time? I would sort of advocate the idea that the website does some things very well. There are some analytics that show there's a high visitation amongst job seekers, and they get where they want to go really quickly. And so there are some very successful aspects. When it comes down to presentation and look, Civic Plus is the company that does this nationally, and that's why we're doing the research now, because, you know, they always say, what goes in comes out, you know? And so where we were, because I've been a resident of Batavia for 20 years, where we were was sad, where we got was far better. And I think Howard and the team, the IT team, did a lot of hard work to get that clarity in place even. That's a compliment, not a criticism, because there are some limitations to how the website is structured and what we got and the package we got that sort of limit what you can do. I know that some of the sites that we have even in town, that Scott's firm has done, have a really clean flow and feel, and they're almost transparent, and there's layers and that sort of thing. Well, some of that's just not possible with our site. You can't do it. You have some slideshow, some of the stuff in there is kind of late 80s, early 90s, when the web world began, and I'll be clicking, and I go, okay, I'm just not going to put that up there, you know? So there are new tools, and I think we're going to be able to put that together, so we're already having those discussions. But your question is valid, so the thing that I think we should take it upon ourselves to do is sort of come up with a little structure and get that out to all of you, the city council to show with some links and things like that, hey, these are some of the examples of what we think might be a great presentation for the City of Batavia. Here's a tool, here's what a landing page looks like, here's what a pop-up field to generate leads looks like, so you guys can, so I love that, I hate that, I love that. So it could be, that way it can be a collaborative process.
Well, I think, I guess my question stems from, you know, there is a psychology behind websites. There's a what and a why, and now that falls to a UX designer who deals with the user experience, which our user experience is relatively bad when you get to our website to try to navigate your way around and stuff. And in my mind, a lot of this comes down to money, because we chose the low-dollar package when it came to this last redesign. And so I guess where I'm going with this is when we start looking at budgets for a website, I think that we need to look higher in terms of how much we're going to spend for a redesign.
The good news is, the Cody, Wyoming site is built on Civic Plus.
Yes, that's why.
Yes, there are some, it all depends on what you buy.
And that looks...
Part of the problem, it's just the visual, the color...
Yes.
And yet, it's the tool that's part of our package.
The cell phone that you had, or the laptop that you had three or five years ago and what they are today.
Oh, no, I totally get it.
There's just so much changing.
I totally get it. I work in that world, so I totally get it. I'm just concerned because we really, I feel, it was a huge upgrade from the first site, but I still think that we came in somewhere down here instead of up here, and I don't want to see that happen again. I don't want to have to go through this process every three years and go, we need to do a major overhaul on the website, because it just is so darn bad.
Well, the difference is we have a communications person now, right?
I also have really high expectations for what it looks like, because I do think that for many people out there, that is their impression of our community. If they're not physically out there, and they're looking for information about us, this is where they're getting their impression.
So that was number one. Number two is, why don't we link back to Batavia Main Street, the Chamber of Commerce, et cetera, on our website? Why are there no reciprocal links where I can just hit the city landing page and then find all those other things?
They're there, but they're not very present. They're somewhat, now, we've changed that, for instance, with like the economic development.
Right, I saw that.
There are some links on there that are very direct, and I even put their pictures on there.
Yes, I saw that, too.
Part of that, I think, is to sort of experiment at that, too, because one of the things that's very hard on websites is total real estate. And if you get too cluttered, which was the previous website's problem, then nothing stands out. And that's why those buttons across the top were originated, and, you know, why we keep the, we looked earlier this year at the idea of stripping out that big, hard border at the top and coming up with something that was airier. But when we started to look at what would happen with that, we'd lose some functionality. So we put that on the to-do list. So, but your suggestion's good, and I'm also looking at some of the tourism aspects. I purposely put in a little strip down at the bottom that has the flag and that sort of thing. Believe it or not, it's sort of a little precursor to see how the site functions, in that that might be a great place for some of our tourism-type things, but that could also be a nice place to rack up some logos from our partners in town and make that a very easily accessible thing.
And the last thing is easy, and the city government page, the very last line where it says Batavia Firefighters Pension Board, board is misspelled.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay.
And if you could fix it, I'd really appreciate it. I know, it's bizarre.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you for putting this together. It kind of helps me to understand more of what you do, because it's not my business, so. And I do like a lot of the stories that go out, you know, whether about Kluber or whatever. What I would probably like to see more from a... What I would probably like to see more from a communications standpoint is we all have daytime jobs and might check something around noon and see some kind of miscommunication or something has happened on Facebook where people are furious about something, but they have it all wrong from the first post. And we need to interject in there so it doesn't end up being Susan's, the alderman arguing with everybody.
I don't think we can stop that.
Yeah, maybe not. But I think something needs, we need to be more proactive about that to stem that. Because I think it, I've seen it happen too much where there's just bad information out there. And I think people prior to me know that there's things like, we still have a dam because of public outcry, thinking we need to keep it. We still, we don't have a second bridge. There's a bunch of things we don't have because there's false information out there that was given to residents. And we need to make sure that we are getting them the right story.
So, specific to that, one of the things that I think was a learning curve for me in a job was my instincts are to answer quickly. However, factual information needs to come from the source. So, for example, if there are complaints up on Lincoln, perhaps, if Public Works is doing something and engineering is in control and I give an answer that isn't accurate before checking with them. So sometimes there are necessary delays in order to sort of vet that information. I think we've been closing that loops because, that loop. One of the things we recently did to do that was that Gary Holm initiated a series of meetings with all the Public Works departments. So we went over, I went over there and sat with them. And through this interaction and collaboration, it's still a work in progress, but the communications are a lot quicker now. So whether it's a streets issue or whether it's an engineering issue and road construction or, you know, traffic blocked and I have to be careful never to take another picture from my car window. You know, so I learned the hard way on a couple of these things because I thought, oh, I should get a picture of that. I wasn't thinking. I took one out, you know, I parked my car and I took one looking down Houston Street. Well, people nailed me to the wall on that and I'll take the blame. So it's, there are some subtleties to that, you know? And from the standpoint of our police and fire, too. So just let's take an incident of the example of the shooting at the Steak and Shake. That one of the things that we don't want to do, you know, is to draw people to the area. And so we've had that discussion a little bit. And yet they'll still do that on Facebook. So even an increment of information that's delivered to us by the fire or police department that may not be complete the way some people want it is still very important because it shows that there's someone on the scene. And that's what really people are curious about. And I think that that was really impressed more on me by going to the ICS training and learning that, you know, there are protocols, obviously. And the police Facebook page has more than 6,000 followers. So there's a lot of people who go there for information. I don't control that information. That's the way it should be. And there are some other aspects. You know, with all the work that was done on One Washington and all through Campana, all that information was updated and distributed and vetted by those departments because that's how it has to be. So, but we're trying to close down those loops. And I think your concerns are legitimate and accurate. That, and one of the reasons we subscribe to the Meltwater software was to be able to read the real-time stuff. So I'll go on there and check it. Ironically, we lost one of our big pages in town when We Love Batavia went away. But, you know, it's interesting because maybe that, that traffic's going somewhere else and those complaints are coming somewhere else. What we really want people to do is engage with us directly and ask for the facts. So if I were to say to all those people on We Love Batavia, if you want to know something about Batavia and you have a complaint or criticism or a legal question or any number of things, use our Facebook page. And so every day I go through and anybody who engages with us, I invite them to like our page. And that's been growing us. And so I want to be at 10,000 or 15,000. That'd be great, but it's going to take time. Yes?
Going back to Batavia destination, I know you said you spent a lot of time thinking about those destinations. But for me, a couple stood out and I'm wondering why they're not included. The River, the River Walk, and some of the architecture. There's some architecture tours that the mayor kind of talks about. And those seem like destinations.
Agreed. And I've talked with Michael Kamen a little bit about, for example, the architecture and limestone buildings in town. And Lane Allen came to me one day and, you know, in the stream of consciousness kind of thing, he goes, you know, there's all these buildings that are historic that, you know, really people should know about. And apparently some work was done on that. So I've been following up on some of those. And the river, from the standpoint of the river, after the discussions last night, you know, I talked to Laura.
Or the River.
And the River Walk, yes. And you're right. I mean, I think that should be added to that.
Yep. You know, to Lucy's point, you know, like River Street, again. I think there's only one street like River Street in all the United States even. It's a European concept. And it's just, it's an architectural gem, you know? So it's won national awards. I mean, it's so, it's just, I think it's something we could sell.
Absolutely.
And the quarry.
Better beaches.
Well, we did, we did earn last year one of the top 50 beaches.
Number 48, 96.
Yeah.
Beach community.
Yeah.
That's right.
I like, thank you.
All right.
And I like the fact that we have a collaborative effort with the taxing bodies and the volunteer.
Yeah, that's strong.
Organizations, that we're all trying to work together to enhance our city.
There are some really amazing talents in town. You know, both at the head of those organizations and also in the marketing side. And they all communicate well. And, you know, I'm grateful to be able to have that kind of partnership in this city. It's not common everywhere. There are some area towns that don't have that. And we won't mention, but it makes it more difficult for people. So I'm really grateful to be in a role where when you call someone, they go, sure, I'll help. And that's Batavia, right? That's a really good.
You know, to follow up on that, and I know a town that I've done some work in where the school board sued the municipality for the TIF money. And it went on for a couple of years. And they finally said, you know, we're done, we'll just give you the TIF money back, municipality, because it was resident money representing the school board and representing the municipality. Just for both law firms. And it was just money flying. And so it was pretty unusual. They gave the TIF money back and did not do things that they had proposed to do to enhance their downtown. So it's, so we're very fortunate. I mean, we don't have that with our other taxing bodies. They're behind us and looking to move, you know, Batavia forward. So I think we're, we are very fortunate, as you say.
I will make one comment that I think it's been interesting the last, I'd say, two weeks. There's been a lot more comments that are positive on the certain different Batavia pages and even on when the government page posts something about a power outage or something, people are more appreciative of it than arguing about it or saying something derogatory about it. It's been a lot more positive lately.
And a lot less, is your power out, is my power out? Whose power's out? How long has it been out? When will it be back on? That's all gone away.
Right. So I think that's, you know, one step in the right direction. Things we're doing, it's working.
One of many.
Well, I think people are also starting to learn how information gets out. You don't have to have 17 people comment that the power's out, Western Randall Road. They can wait five minutes and then boom, something pops up.
Well, Cheryl Schimpf in the police department deserves a lot of credit for coordinating and helping to train all of the staff members there in the police department on that. There were some difficult little technological glitches that we had to overcome. And the first trial run didn't go exactly right, but she just doesn't let that daunt her. You know, she gets the job done. And it's really motivating within the organization to see people devoted to quality like that. So it was really good. Thank you. And I don't know how to get this to dump.
143 people have commented on people racing up and down Blaine Street today, in one day. 143 people have decided to comment on.
Right, and Marty and I didn't get a call about it. And.
The police probably did get a call.
The police finally did get a call, I would think.
On what street?
On Blaine, somebody who's upset and has, you know, burned out in front of the house three or four times as they leave because they're in a mad huff as they run out. So everybody had to have a comment about that.
Susan Moody will call me tomorrow.
Okay. It's getting late, so let's move on to the next item, which is project status. Laura?
Okay, as a first matter of business, staff does not anticipate any items for an agenda for a committee of the whole meeting on July 3rd. So unless there are any matters from the aldermen, perhaps that should be a meeting that we cancel.
I'd say we cancel it.
Okay. Our next strategic planning meeting will be July 9th. And as with the past meetings, we will meet at East Side Fire Station at 7:00 PM. Some great work has been done up to this point to identify some themes for objectives. I think that in this next meeting, our goal should be to walk out the door with a draft strategic plan, some solid objectives with action items that then we can, we can really have our first draft strategic plan. So I'm really excited for that, that particular meeting. And that will be both department heads as well as city council working together to articulate those items. Next, today, the business retention survey closed and we received 77 responses from Batavia businesses. And so our economic development consultant will be analyzing those results and creating an executive summary report for you. And then also, we received word last week that Suncast is beginning construction on the railroad spur that is associated with the expansion of the building that they did over on Suncast Lane. So they're really ramping up for a dramatic increase in the manufacturing that they're doing here in our community toward the end of this year. And does anybody have any questions about other products, projects that I can answer?
Is there an update on the branding?
So our direction was just to put that on a shelf until the strategic plan had been completed.
Okay, there we go.
Any questions for Laura? Okay, is that it, Laura?
Yes.
All right. Others? Anybody having other?
I.
Drew?
So when Walmart announced they were leaving, one of the things we put on hold was help for community development. And it happens in the past week. I've heard from two different people who have been waiting for what they feel is a very long time to get a permit through the system. I was one for an above-ground pool and a deck. So I was curious to hear from community development what the workload's looking like. I know there's a lot of projects going on in town.
It's busy.
I'll say, you're saying you're busy. They're swamped.
So typically, to follow up on Drew, how long does it take if somebody comes in for a deck permit? How long has it taken now? We kind of had this conversation when we went through the budget and we all said that that answer wasn't acceptable. And now we're having the conversation again.
Kind of why I'm bringing it up again.
Typically, typically a deck permit, we would normally, in the past, probably be able to turn it around in about a week, give or take. Right now, it's probably two.
You throw a above-ground pool in with that?
No, it doesn't, it doesn't, slightly, but not much. And that, you know, and then it all depends on, almost, almost none of those projects seem to go without some back and forth. There's always questions or things that come up and it's how quickly do those get responded to? And then putting it back in the queue to get done and out. So, yeah, it's.
I mean, this comes in conjunction with some really positive news that there is quite a bit of economic activity within, not only when you look at additional rooftops that are coming to our community, but leases that, new leases that are being signed and people who want to do a different type of build-out inside of existing buildings. There's a lot of that happening right now, too. And so I wanted to wait until when Peggy could come back and give you a, an idea of what the impact has been. But the truth is that you can't really do a trend analysis on the first four months that Sam's Club hasn't been here. That's not really going to give you a picture of what it's going to look like over the next couple of years. It's not a steady state. So, for example, you had in the beginning when Sam's Club was selling off all of their inventory, people might have stocked up. So maybe it dropped off after that. The next thing that happens is people figure out where are they going to buy the exact same things? And they might try to shop local and after several months decide it's not so easy to shop local for the things. And they may want to shop in another big box store. The opposite may happen. They may decide to go to a big box store, but then say, I keep hearing in the news all of this about the impact to my community, about Sam's Club leaving. I'm going to try to do something different and come back. So the truth is, we're not going to be able to really do a trend analysis. I have Peggy coming back in August to talk about the financials for the first half of the year. But this community development position, Scott knows, we've been talking about it about every other week this year.
And that's, I guess, the point I'm trying to get to is, you know, we just heard we're getting record numbers of inquiries coming in through the website. We have a whole bunch of big projects going on. We've got a bunch of development. Are we getting to the point with the lack of resources that we're doing ourselves harm by not being able to provide the services? By, you know, trying to be responsible and sit on this and wait until we know what the numbers look like? But are we actually getting to the point where there's enough backlog that we're hurting ourselves by not taking some action?
I don't see it slowing down.
And also knowing that from the point at which there would be a commitment to, yes, fill the position due to posting for the position for three weeks there, interviewing all the candidates who come from that and then the, you know, making the final. You could be looking at a three-month period of time for that. And that's just to bring the person in the door. And then you're going to have to teach them all about the unique aspects of what our codes are. They're going to help with both code enforcement and also with the inspections that need to be done so that those who are focused on reviewing plans can really have that be 100% of their focus. So there's a probably six-month period of time that we're talking about until you get somebody who is beginning to be competent in their position.
Do we have, maybe Laura or Scott or Jeff, I don't know which, do we have something, Jeff, you just mentioned, that there's usually a lot of back and forth or some back and forth? You know, they apply, they come in, they pick up and you got review notes and then they got to go do what they got to go do, then they come back. And of course, that takes everybody a lot of time and delays everything, whether it be a pool and a deck or whether it be an expansion on Funway. Do we have something that we hand these people that says, in order for you to do what you want to do, this is what you have to provide us?
Yes, we do, we do have a number of handouts for our various types of projects or permits. Are they perfect? No. I think we're always looking to improve them, there's no question. But yes, we definitely have, for most of our projects, we have those types of handouts that kind of direct you as to, these are the types of information and the types of things we need to have to be able to process this through. And, you know, we do our best to try and approve things as noted when possible. I mean, if the items that are lacking are minor. are lacking are minor, you know, and can be easily worked with in the field, we try and do that. And try and just hit on the big things that are really, I mean, the last thing we want to do is go out on a, on a project and, and find out it was installed incorrectly or, or a problem and have to have them redo it. That, that's why we try and do a thorough plan review upfront. But we also try and balance that with, you know, the minor things, letting them go forward with the minor things. So, it's, it's kind of a balancing act.
Anything else, Drew?
No, that was, that was it.
Mark?
This is for Chief Guel. So, I routinely look out my kitchen window and see the radar gun on Batavia Avenue in mid-40s. Do you have trending on that yet to see if people are slowing down or, and I'm just catching this bad time? And are we doing any enforcement?
Are you talking about the one north of McKee Street?
Yeah.
We're not currently recording on that one, but we are doing enforcement on Batavia Avenue, on both north of Wilson Street and south of Main Street.
Okay.
Anyone else under others? Okay, then we'll go on to the next item, which is executive session for the purpose of setting the price of land for sale?
Yes.
Quick, it'll be real quick, but there won't be any action taken.
No.
So, I need a motion.
So, move.
Second. Motion by O'Brien, second by Salvati, for executive session for the purpose of setting the price of land for sale. All in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Motion's carried.